Allegiance led by myself, so please stand and join me in saluting our nation's flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which is in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Again, with roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Mayor Protem Darris?
Here.
Mayor Barbeau?
Here.
All present.
All right, thank. We will move on to our consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of items that are considered routine and non-controversial by staff and will be acted upon in a single motion by the city council unless otherwise requested by a council member for separate consideration. I will ask, does any member of the council wish to pull an item for separate consideration? Okay, then we will proceed to see if there's any public comment on any consent calendar items. Okay, seeing no one approach, we'll bring it back to council. Does council have any questions of staff regarding any item? Seeing none, we will entertain a motion.
Move approval on consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Funk and a second by councilmember Peak. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Darris?
Yes.
Mayor Barbeau?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We will proceed on to updates from the city manager, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of council. I'm over here now tonight. We are trying a new configuration here. Hopefully this will work well for all of you and for staff. I do have a few things, thank you. First of all, the ECR project construction update. You know, I'm probably down to like two or three more of these. Isn't that exciting? It's been a year almost, not quite, and we're getting down to the wire. So for the rest of this week, we will actually see pavement striping and bollard installation. So this is going to be very exciting, striping the pavement. It was moved this week between Highway 41 and Traffic Way. And so you saw some of the stencils going in today. They'll be very real and final looking. Roadway segments will be intermittently closed during the active construction, but other roadway segments will remain open. We have message and directional signages and flaggers. And we've had detour routes going down Entrada and around the Sutton Garden. I was talking to a business owner the other day that actually said she's gained several customers because people have noticed her business driving down Entrada. So that's, um, that's good. I hope that's been more the case than not. Please be aware of the traffic signage and plan for a couple delays. Work will also continue in the median on El Camino between 41 and Traffic Way. This has more of the electrical crosswalk pavers and DG pathways, et cetera. So a little heavier work up north of, um, uh, Traffic Way, pardon me. And then you'll see trenching irrigation there as well. So that's this week. Next week, as we enter June, work will continue on El Camino between 41 and Traffic Way with plants for the most part. And we'll see asphalt milling and paving north of Traffic Way, uh, June 3rd through 5th, we're looking at. So that'll also be very exciting as that corridor gets the full street treatment. Again, be careful, um, as you're driving through. In order to minimize impacts and safety, we are going to do some night work on Wednesday evening, June 4th. And so we try and do that as rare as possible, but only really if something's going to gum up the intersection and there's a reason for safety, we have authorized night work on June 4th. So it's something for us to be aware of. Okay, as we're talking about fire tonight and fire hazard zones, we're really pleased to share that we received our first nationally recognized Firewise USA community. So Oak Ridge Estates is very proud their HOA to be a nationally recognized Firewise USA site. And they extend their thanks to Dave Van Son, our battalion chief who worked. He's in the audience, thank you, Chief Van Son. You have been so helpful on these programs for our neighborhoods to work on fire prevention and making safer communities. And so they did a community-wide drive-through evaluation and also consulted with their builder. And this is a great three-year action plan that outlines phased strategies to improve wildfire preparedness through education, home hardening, defensible space, and evacuation planning. But I think this is something our communities can do to take back some, uh, ownership of your risk and actually do this so you're in a safer spot. Next slide, Bike to Work Day 2025. We had Pedal to the Garden. We had a great turnout. You can see pictures there of people biking to work. It was a lot of fun. And so we encourage you to keep pedaling and supporting a local. That's what makes us special, that we have a community that you can bike around and eat and support local business. Last week was Public Works Week. I want to thank everyone who joined us. It was really fun out there. We had lots of equipment in our booth and people. So we really appreciated getting to share Public Works and what they do, really helping our community thrive and function. So I appreciate all they do. And Friday, uh, late afternoon, as crews were coming back in, I got to share ice cream. I brought ice cream out to the yard to thank our Public Works staff. And it wasn't the hottest Friday afternoon, but I think it was appreciated. And I always enjoy being at the yard, thanking them on your behalf. Our weed abatement program, June 1st, is right here. So help fire and emergency services prepare by clearing weeds. June 1st is the date. So that is this weekend, I believe. So if you don't have weekend plans and you have weeds, you have plans now. So June 1st, uh, your weeds must be clear. For information about that, you can go to atascadero.org/fire. A few fun things in our community. We love to celebrate our young people. And we are really excited to have a high school championship celebration on June 2nd at 3:30 at City Hall. And so we'll be hosting the Atascadero High School Champions. We have champions in, uh, different athletic, uh, groups. We have a CIF title and some other state awards we're recognizing. If it is a very hot day, we will not be facing the sun in the Sutton Garden. We'll be on the backside of the building. And so I think just, we've had a few instances lately where I think we should be prudent there. If it's a weekend like we've had, I will be on the front of the building. But that's where we'll be, uh, at City Hall here, celebrating that. And graduation is upon us. So for those folks who, um, don't have children or may have children out of the school system, that next week is the last week of school. So here we go. Graduation is on June 4th. So that'll be a very busy day in the community. And we'll start seeing the kids in all of our stores and shops and parks shortly thereafter. Finally, a little fun, the 22nd Annual Ice Cream Zufari is coming up. 70 years of the Charles Paddock Zoo. And so this will be Saturday, June 7th, from 5 until 8. Unlimited, unlimited, here, unlimited ice cream. Fun for the whole family. And we're going to unveil the zoo's new name and logo at this as we celebrate our next 70 sweet years. So celebrate the past, enjoy the present, be part of our zoo's exciting future. So we're, we're very thrilled about this. So that's it. Any questions? Lot of stuff.
If you remember, oh, I'm sorry, I got a Mayor Protem Darris.
Thank you. Jim, you and I talked about this and I've had a lot of questions on the, uh, the light poles that are out.
Oh, yes.
If we could talk about, you know, some people are concerned about the unfinished look of the top.
Thank you for raising that, councilmember, Mayor Protem. So yeah, in the plans, there actually is just a flat cap that goes on those. But I think we've had several conversations in the community that that looks not finished. And so I have asked staff, uh, Mr. DeBarre, to, uh, talk with the contractor about options. Some more decorative caps, decorative finials that match the light. And so I trust that's occurring and, uh, we'll make sure that those are more decorative. But I think that was a discussion topic amongst many of us as we saw those, uh, looking like that. So yeah, thank you for bringing that up. We will do something. But they won't be lights. I want to make that, there are some people who thought they should have lights on them. That, that's not there, but they'll be decorative caps for sure.
Um, I'm going to go, councilmember Funk.
Yes, regarding, uh, June 4th, you noted in your presentation that we're doing evening work on ECR. You also noted that June 4th is high school graduation night. Can you talk to us about how those two are coordinated?
Yeah, wow, that's, um, actually, June 5th is high school graduation, right? I get the wrong date in my report.
Uh, no.
It's the 4th, okay.
Yeah, I just checked the wrong line.
Mr. DeBarre or Mr. Settles, you want to speak to that? Huh? Yeah, graduation, go ahead. What's the hours of the night work?
Sure, um, it'll be overnight. And, um, we're, we're talking with the contractor right now to see if they might end up delaying it tonight, but we don't know for sure yet. So, uh, we're getting that scheduled. We want to make sure there's no conflict with any traffic with, uh, graduation or any of the downtown businesses, so.
That's a very good point. I'm sorry I didn't catch that because high school, you know, the high school's going to go a couple hours.
Right.
And, uh, you're going to have people pouring out of High School Hill. And that's not going to work if we're out there at 8 o'clock or something. So we have to figure that out.
Right. If it's. Or we might delay the, you know, when they start a little later. But we want to try to get out there at 8 at night. So it might, we'll talk with our contractor and work out those details out.
Okay, yeah, that will be important. Thank you.
Question, councilmember?
Just to clarify, it's the intersection only of Traffic Way and ECR that's being closed? Or is it other sections of the road?
It's, um, it's the intersection of Traffic Way and then north up to the police station at Rosario. So that whole section, they're going to mill on, I believe, uh, early in the week on, during the daytime. And then at night, they'll pave the entire amount. So they'll be able to pave the intersection of Traffic Way and everything else up to the police station in one night.
Any other questions from council for the city manager?
My dates are funny here, council. So I said June 2nd is the parade and that is true, but my notes said Tuesday and that was odd to me. It's Monday. So, um, my notes are a little jumbled tonight. I apologize. The parade is Monday, June 2nd at 3:30. So the date was right, but the day is Monday. So I apologize for that.
Okay, all right. We will proceed. The next item on our agenda is community forum. And community forum is reserved for persons wanting to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. The Brown Act prohibits council from discussing matters not on the agenda. The council may at its discretion ask staff to contact a speaker or answer a quick question. Speakers are limited to three minutes. And if you come forward, please state your name for the record. Okay, first speaker, please.
Good evening, council and staff. Let's talk for a second about the ECR project. I think the parking down El Camino is fantastic. I think the traffic slowing down so we're not hitting our children anymore and the stoplights is fantastic. I'm not overly thrilled with four of our intersections and I hope that we continue to study them. We were told a lot of things during the planning sessions of these intersections. And I'm concerned still with all four intersections now, uh, all the way up to Rosario. And of course, uh, Traffic Way. And, um, I'm going to get confused, but we switched the one ways, of course, which is great. But the one across from the gas station, um, now has a no left turn. So you have to go all the way up to La Plaza and make a left turn there technically to make a U-turn to get to the gas station. I don't think that, I was told during that by several people here that you could still go left and you could go right. You're cutting off business to that gas station by that. Now, if somebody like me is smart enough to drive through a parking, uh, spot to get there, that's fine. But I think you're going to see illegal left turns. And when enforcement happens, we're going to have a problem. I think we really need to look at these intersections and how we did them. A couple of the popouts, still not in favor of. We should have three lanes in some areas going right and left and straight, whether it's northbound or southbound at Traffic Way. I don't think your residents in town are going to be very happy about it. If you read some of the postings in social media, I'm not the only one that has brought this concern up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other speakers? Yes, if we do, go ahead and if anybody else wants to speak, please go ahead and stand in line so we can move on. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Golden. I'm about to open up Decades Hi-Fi Lounge at Palma and Traffic Way. And as many of you have seen me working there for the past eight to nine months on the sidewalk, the intersection for Palma that comes up where everybody makes the U-turn, I've been out there and 90% of the cars coming up make the U-turn. I witnessed eight cars get hung up on the curb and the rock. I've seen tra, I've, I've seen several of those cars have had to have double tow trucks to lift them up and pull them off the rock. I've also seen people land in that curb structure and, uh, whatever, back and forth their way out. It's just, I need to know if, I, I, the city's got to be aware of what's going there because 90% of all the people that come up Palma from City Hall make a, a U-turn there. It's double solid yellow lines going in. I got a ticket once, judge told me I should have recognized that just like a concrete wall, that I wasn't allowed to go around it. I know, I'm just off the cuff. I'm thinking if we put some of the orange flexible cones down in that strip, that maybe people wouldn't attempt to do a U-turn there. And the sign that says right turn only is white with a black light. It's not very illuminated at night. It doesn't have the reflective or maybe not enough reflective stuff in it. But even by daytime, I see a lot of people from working there, they make the left, they start to make the left and then they notice the last minute and they make the right. It's very misleading to a lot of drivers. The hill, the angle of the car going up, you don't see the curb. It just needs to somehow be visible. And I, I know there's that, uh, actually by being the business now, right there in front of the tree, I've seen people rocking off back and forth, that if their car, if their tires hit the road rocking off their right, they're coming into my place. And I hate to be the first one to have it happen to me, but I really think it needs some attention. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for opening a business downtown. We appreciate it. And Mr. DeBarre, you've made note of his comments and his name, make me, you can make contact. All right, thank you all. Anybody else wishing to speak during community forum? Okay, if not, we will close community forum. We will bring it back. Our next item is a public hearing regarding adoption of, of fire hazard severity zone maps and a discussion about that. I have just been informed upon arriving at the meeting that three of us, based on, uh, the location of our homes, uh, have potential conflicts of interest. And so I would like, uh, the city attorney to address that and how we proceed on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I'm concerned about the issues of the conflicts is the FPPC came out with an opinion letter about 15 years ago, specifically when a city council was adopting some fire severity maps. And because they said that a council member has a, uh, financial interest in declaring, uh, a particular map, even though the state requires us to declare those maps, I want to make sure that the council does this correctly and avoids any concerns about getting the maps adopted, uh, with conflicts of interest. So based on the analysis that staff did regarding your property ownership, it appears that, uh, you, Miss, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Peak, uh, and Councilmember Newsom have properties that are in areas of town that could potentially be, uh, graded higher as part of the map or are in a very high area. So there is a potential for the conflict. As a result of that, uh, if the three of you declare that conflict, we would not have a quorum to continue business. And so what we have to engage in is what's called the rule of necessity, where we draw a straw to bring one of you back to consider the matter. The other two of you, because it involves your personal interests, you're welcome to remain in the room. You can speak on your personal interest, you just can't participate in the decision. And then, uh, in order to pass the ordinance by first reading, uh, then, uh, it would need to be unanimous because an ordinance requires three votes. So unfortunately, I'm sorry, uh, those are the rules that the FPPC puts in front of us. But I did want to try to line it out for you and let you know why we're concerned about the potential for conflicts on that.
I think, and so you indicated we would have to draw straws, the three of us, because obviously one of us must participate in the proceeding. So we would have to draw straws.
That's correct. And, uh, Ms. Christensen has the straws, uh, and she will, uh, provide those to the three of you who have conflicts. I believe for the purposes of FPPC, I've lined out the conflicts that you have. It's because of personal property, uh, ownership that, uh, that this is the issue. But, uh, ultimately, we'll go ahead and draw the straws. And Ms. Christensen, I believe it's the short straw that will be coming back. So the, the council member who, or the mayor who receives the short straw will be, uh, remaining.
Okay. And if I am not the person selected to remain, then Mayor Protem Darris will take over the proceeding for this particular item.
Correct.
And I want to be clear, though, that this is based upon the location of our properties in the moderate zone. Or not moderate, but, uh, the orange zone on the map.
Yes, it's either the high, the very high, or the unzoned area.
And that's because the council has some discretion over how we apply that map to building.
That's correct.
Whereas if we were in the very severe area, we would have no discretion and there would not really be a conflict.
You cannot upgrade it, uh, in the very high, but you have properties in the high.
Yeah. Got it. So, all right, thank you for the explanation and we will have the city clerk proceed to the straw drawing. All right, so councilmember Newsom will remain on the dais. So now, did you indicate that, that others of us can sit in the audience and listen?
Yes, because this involves your personal financial interests, the First Amendment trumps the FPPC's regulation. You just can't participate as a member of council, but you are free to speak and, uh, and listen during the proceedings, uh, because it does involve your personal interests.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to turn the proceedings over to Mayor Protem Darris. Bet you didn't think that was, this was your, going to be your first opportunity.
Thank you, mayor. I was waiting. I'll wait till you guys come.
Okay, so I guess to move forward then, uh, I'll just turn it over to staff for the, for the report. Who's, I'm not sure who's going to, uh, Mr.?
Thank you, council.
Chief Bryson, thank you.
I'll be starting the presentation. I also have Battalion Chief Dave Van Son here with me. He's going to do part of it as well. So we are talking about the 2025 fire hazard severity zones. We actually have this kind of broken down into two parts, where we'll be recommending that the council adopt the state fire hazard map tonight. That'll be our recommendation. And we'll go through that piece. And after that, we do need to talk about our local wildland urban interface fire area map. That's a, a local map that we adopt that dictates our wildland urban interface building code standards. So we're going to kind of break it into, we're happy to stop in the middle of answering any questions on the state map, if you'd like. But other than that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Anson for a moment to go over the state map.
Thanks, thank you, Chief Bryson. So I'm going to go over, um, an overview of the state mandate on, uh, fire hazard severity zone maps. California offices, state fire marshal released, um, updated 2025 fire hazard severity zone maps for local responsible areas, including Atascadero. City council must adopt the map by July 8th, 2025, per government code 51179. And the state did not give us the opportunity to comment. Once the map was delivered to us, uh, we were required to go through the adoption process, which we're doing tonight. So within the hazard severity zones, you have moderate, which you will see would be the yellow on the map, which, um, no building code is required. It's just a formal map adoption. You would have high, which is orange, which, um, is a wildland urban interface. Building cones apply to the new construction starting January 1 of 2026. And then you'll have the very high, which is red. And the woo wee codes apply, uh, now to all new constructions and ADUs. So the very high also requires what's called the defensible space inspection, which, um, is already covered through our redebatement process. So there won't be any additional inspections that will be required at that time. And then we also have a, a required, uh, real estate disclosures, um, for high and very high. And this is, um, the burden of the property owner. When they have to sell their property, they have to disclose that they're either in the high or very high, uh, severity zone. So why this matters? So these zones reflect wildfire hazards and not risks based on long-term physical conditions such as slope, wind, fuel load, and ember casting. This was all thrown into a model developed by, um, the scientists in CAL FIRE. They threw the model into a computer and it created our zones for us. Just, just on a side note, the insurance process, um, of deter, of determining, uh, premiums is based on a fire risk, not a fire hazard. Things that can help for the insurance, uh, process is like a Firewise communities, like we did in, um, Oak Ridge Estates, as well as becoming a resilient, uh, Firewise community. So, um, like I said, we received these maps on March 10th. So we did some public engagement to encourage community feedback on the fire hazard severity zones. City staff, we posted, um, with the option to submit comments on April 8th, 2025. And then we held a workshop downstairs in, um, the entryway, uh, on May 7th, 2025 and engaged in public comment and had some, um, good questions by the public that day. So here, here is the map. Again, the red is what's considered very high fire severity zone. Um, the, uh, the orange is the high fire severity zone and the yellow is moderate. And what is not colored is, um, the area of town that is excluded from any fire hazard severity zones.
So that concludes the first part on the state map. We do have an ordinance as an attachment. So we'll be asking council at the, the end to, uh, vote on that ordinance, to approve that map. And I will pause just for a moment. If you have any questions on the state map before we move into the, the Atascadero Wildland Urban Interface map.
All right, thank you, chief. Do we have any questions? Oh, we've got a couple of, we'll start like far right, and councilmember Newsom.
So you had indicated that we must adopt it by July 8th. What happens if we choose not to adopt it?
We could choose not to adopt it. It would basically be something where the state may come in and just force us to. We were actually forced to in 2021 when we adopted the local hazard mitigation map. So one map or one, uh, policy triggered the other one, so.
Was there any penalties to the city for not making that adoption in that case?
No, there were not.
How many people attended the one and only workshop that we did for public outreach?
Public outreach, uh, gathering we had, we probably had, I would say, at least 10, 10 different people come in and ask questions. There are more interested to see where their property, um, resided within the zones. And more of their, um, questions were based on insurance rather than, uh, building mandates.
Which ties into my next question. One of the attachments, attachment six was not attached to the agenda. Council was provided that this afternoon was the public provided with the letter from California Commissioner Lara.
Yes, they were. We sent it out as an addendum to the agenda.
And did that addendum go out at the same time at 4 o'clock today? Or did that go out prior to council getting it?
That, I believe that went out shortly after you received it as an amended agenda.
So the public that doesn't check their email every day may not know what it says. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a copy of that letter for presentation tonight? And the only reason why I bring it up, it says CAL FIRE's maps are required by law and their purpose is to drive local planning decisions, but not insurance decisions. This says that accepting this map doesn't change insurance premiums and that it is only done for a local planning decision. But yet the state is forcing us to adopt it by July 8th. For what purpose?
The purpose would be to identify the fire hazard in your, in your area. So following the Oakland Hills fire, they state passed laws for the CAL FIRE to issue these maps for local jurisdictions so they could base their building codes on the fire hazard so as not to have a re, a repeat disaster like Oakland Hills fire.
But our city already has a wildfire map that we use on a regular basis, is that correct?
We do.
So the fire severity zone map you have up, if we go into the next attachments, we have our wildland urban interface. What's the difference between the two?
So we'll go into a slide and I'll, I'll show the slide here in just a moment. Our wildland urban interface map was adopted by council in 2021 and it was based on previous versions of the state map and a previous version of a county hazard map. When the state updated maps in 2008, we did not choose to adopt at that point. We did, as I mentioned, when we adopted a local hazard mitigation plan, we pulled both of those maps together and the new very high designation that the state had given us in, I believe that was the 2011. And so we combined basically two to three maps together to create our own wildland urban interface map that exceeded the state standards. It didn't, uh, it was able to include all the areas we were already building to the wildland standard and the new state requirement of the very high at that time.
So the map that comes after this, so the fire hazards, your severity zone map, doesn't benefit our city, you? doesn't benefit our city, you and making or your department, fire department in making decisions that is totally different than the wildland urban interface.
The map. Let me make sure I'm hearing you correctly. So the the wooi map that we will adopt for the city building code.
We still exist with a wooi map, but this is saying the state says we have to adopt it. However, it doesn't have any effect on insurance for homeowners, but it's mandatory for us. It's saying in this letter for local planning decisions. But we already have a wooi in place. So if we have two different maps, which one supersedes the other?
That is a good question. So this map contains more high and very high than our existing wooi map today, the state map does. So by state law, we have to build set the building code to include all high and very high. So this map has a larger area of high and very high than it did before. So we do have to increase the area of our wildland urban interface map, our local map to meet that state requirement.
Okay. How many partials is this affecting? Changing from our way to the state severity. I think we had modified email that went out revising those numbers. Can we have those numbers? Just in case the public also hasn't seen that email that went out at three today.
Part of that answer will be based on several, well, three options that I was going to show you. So I can give you parcel numbers currently. If if that would be helpful, or I can give you the the parcel changes as we look at the map options.
Sorry, I think if we're going to look at this, I'd like to do everything as a whole and I'll let Mayor Portem adjust that. But I think it's hard to look at this map without looking at everything that's going to come behind it. So I think that we ask our questions as we go through all of it and see it as a whole. And then we can go back and I think digest what we're having to do with the state map. Is that helpful?
Absolutely. So maybe it will be helpful then to move on and show the options of maps.
Councilmember Funk has a question.
Yeah, I did. I have a process question on that point. I'm I'm all in favor of of taking a comprehensive look at this and I have quite a few questions, but most of them are about the the items that we have genuine discretion as opposed to theoretically, we could defy state law. But we have genuine discretion over the what happens to the areas newly designated as moderate. And what that means. And I have questions about that. But I'm so my question for the city attorney on this is we've got, given that we have two questions before us, one is the adoption of the the or the proposed ordinance that would accept these the state map. And the second pertains to giving staff guidance with regard to the wildland urban interface, which is actually the document that we use in Atascadero to identify and manage these key areas. So can we separate those two? Does the conflict of interest that my colleagues experience who have homes in the high fire zone risk? Does that apply to the whole discussion about the wooi map? And the discretion that we have over what to do about the moderate areas?
The short answer to your question is that they are separate and that if you were not considering the wooi map tonight and you were just considering the the fire severity zones, then we would have the conflict issue. With the wooi map, however, there's what we have. It's called the public generally exception. And because everyone in the community is affected in the same manner by the wooi map. In other words, there's not differential zones in it like there is with this one here. Then there wouldn't be those same types of conflicts because it would impact more than 25% of the community. Whereas with the highs, very high and the high fire hazard severity zones, that's less than 25%. And that's the standard that FPPC uses to determine whether or not that type of conflict is any different than the public generally. So if council wants to consider just this map now, you can go ahead and vote on that. And then you could bring the remainder of the council back to discuss the wooi map, which doesn't have those conflict issues.
That that would be my preference if we can do that. Recognize recognizing that we may need to have a broader discussion among the three of us about, you know, that the discussion. You know, I don't, I would not want my colleagues to feel limited in what they say on the issue of the adoption of the map and the proposed ordinance tonight. But I would, if we can then deal with that question and then open things back up so that our all five of us can join in the discussion about the wooi, I think that would be a more productive discussion that is more representative of our community. Because I value all of my colleagues and their perspectives. You good on that?
I'm good with it. Now that the attorney has pointed out the difference, I think this is a complex conversation that we need to have as a group. I think all of us need to be here. And I think the challenges that I have with looking at these maps is the information that went out at three o'clock and four o'clock to the public. So we didn't have enough public noticing. Okay, we're aware of that. And I mean, I guess we can move on with this and I can tell you that after we do public comment, but I'm okay with hearing it in two parts.
Okay, you guys, I just okay, I just wanted just to reiterate. So this map that's up here right now is what the three of us are going to either accept or not accept. And if we don't accept it, then my understanding is the state could just force us to accept it no matter what. Is that what I'm understanding?
I believe so. Yes. And I just want to point out that the state has set these high and very high areas that we need to adopt to enforce the building code. These are areas we have to build in town to the wildland and interface building code. Absolutely. That's where we have to build our homes too. So we we have to adopt the high and the very high to enforce the building code.
Okay. And I know it's already been stated, but I just want to have it said again. So once we take care of this, then then the other two, the mayor and the other council member can come back and we can talk about the other maps and the remaining all five of us together. Okay, that I remember that. Any more questions at staff? Okay, Councilmember Newsom, go ahead.
So the adoption of this state map then ties into fees that will be assessed. So additional cost of compliance, all of that additional cost for building code. Would that all 100% go to the city or would some of that be allocated to the state?
Additional costs.
The additional costs are in construction materials.
I know.
So that's going to go to the contractor who's building a house more hardened. Then our permit fees shouldn't be different.
So you said that we have to adopt the state map to building codes for new builds or ADUs, the cost to build those would increase, correct?
The cost of the construction will increase.
Yes.
Because of the fire severity area there and and there will be a stricter more strict building compliance sprinklers, things like that. Those costs for construction will go up. And on page 54, where I say additional cost for chapter 78 compliance, California, those costs are based on this state map.
Yes.
Okay. And these costs are the new costs or those are the or you listed them as the extra cost based on this state severity zone map that contractors will be paying to build single family, multifamily and commercial. So we're looking at 10,000 square feet is going to cost an extra 88,000 to build based on this state severity map.
And that is a a estimate of what we think. There will also be the whole new building code that comes out for to be able to be read in July, takes effect in January. We don't know exactly what it will say. But we're estimating that the cost of tempered or double pane windows, the roofing materials, the eaves, boxing, the soffits, the doors and the siding, all that would be about 88,000 for that commercial structure.
So if we do not adopt this state map, we do not change our building code in July? To have those additional costs?
If you don't adopt the state map, the state fire marshal through EDIC will say this is your map. And we don't know exactly. This is Sacramento being really helpful to local jurisdictions. We have this all figured out on our own.
Right.
So I think, you know, to be fair to our staff, we have some questions too. But the state of California is being helpful by issuing these maps this evening. And so we have city managers have asked what really happens? Is a black helicopter going to land in Sunken Garden is a and we have been told that now, in my experience, and we don't know this, but the state giveth and the state can take it away. The state can take away local control. The state may have some role in our permitting authority. And so that's been my experience. That has not been said here. We certainly appreciate your frustration. I think what's really happening here is a number of these people already are subject to these standards and costs. The the key piece of information is the delta, the number of parcels that this new map picks up. And I think when you want to get to that part of the discussion with the new council, you can. Our local map cannot be inconsistent with this, but it can be more than this, right? That's the discretion you'll end up being able to have in the next discussion. But this is you have to do this. If you don't choose to do it, then it will be law and we'll still have to process permits that are more expensive if someone's building a new structure and the red or orange zones.
So if the state's going to force us to do it, they're going to force us to do it. But they're asking us as a council to come in and do this. We get this notice that's issued out here saying that hazardous maps do not affect insurance rates or availability. However, everybody is seeing an increase in insurance rates right now, starting at 22%. It will increase. If an insurance company looks at this and says, by the way, your severity shows that you're in very high, your insurance is now going to cost you 300%. And we've done something to our local citizens that we're preemptively doing and not just being forced to do. So we're said, hey, adopt it by July 8. But if we don't, the state's going to make us do it anyways. So what's going to happen in that interim when everybody else is saying, hey, we don't agree with this? What are what are the consequences? So you said in the past, the state has issued the requirement for us to make adoptions, but then we haven't made those adoptions, nor will we ever penalize. What's the chance that that happens for this and it saves a few few more homeowners from getting insurance or dropped? Right now State Farm is not allowed to cancel. But no one writes insurance policies for California. It's very challenging. So what I don't want to do is enact this and then tomorrow a different insurer, not State Farm, someone else comes out says, wow, your your city is saying those those partials are truly in a very high area. We're going to go out as they're coming up for renewal and not insure them. And that's my worry. I know our wooi map has been less. It hasn't been as restrictive in some of those areas. And so that's why you have a conflict on this council because some of us, as city attorneys already said, we're affected by this. So I do have some challenges and want to ask all the questions because I'm the one that's allowed to stay up here and ask those questions. I'd be asking it from the public too.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I know that this gets a little bit into the wooi, but for clarity, it would help to see what are the areas that are not currently designated high or very high that in the or that are not part of Atascadero's wooi that would be that are designated high and very high in the in the map that the state is requiring us to adopt. I think it's in the packet about the fourth. Pay. Yeah, it's the last of the maps that were in the packet. But it would, I think, help be helpful to have that. Yeah, that one. Okay. So as we look at this map, am I correct in understanding that the areas that show in orange on this map are the portions of the city that the state has now designated as higher, very high risk that were not previously a subject to the requirements of Atascadero's worry?
That is correct. So that the green is our existing wooi map that council adopted in 2021. Orange or red is overlaid is the additional high and very high from the state.
Okay. And I've second, I've got a question with regard to the impact on insurance. And I know that that there's this very careful distinction that the state is drawing saying that theoretically, this is not going to affect insurance and it and it doesn't feed directly into the risk models that insurance companies use. Right? Insurance companies will take into account other things like our we debatement program that we do every year. And the level of fire service and the fact that we have water access up in the hills and those kinds of factors, will he not?
That is correct. So I they're going to use very similar modeling, I would think, as the hazard map. But they will take into effect or into account those short term modifications that can be done. So the building code would be one, fuel modification projects would be another. The great example tonight that we discussed, a community banding together and becoming a firewise community. That does something for your insurance. So those shorter term modifications we're told will affect insurance on the risk side.
Yeah. Then as a follow up, the state is is putting these hazard maps out in sequence. So we're not the first part of the state to have to do this. So I know northern, as I recall, Northern California went first or some portions of that. So in those areas of Northern California that have already had to adopt these maps, have these maps resulted in immediate changes, increases in insurance in the manner that that councilmember Newsom was expressing concern might happen? Or are we seeing the same kinds of effect? Is it happening generally across markets or is it happening in zones that are affected by this?
I have not heard after the rollouts from the other areas of the state, if there was any major changes in insurance. That hasn't been reported.
Yeah, I haven't seen any reporting on it either. But it would, if we end up not making a final decision on this night, that is something that we should monitor. Because that is a reality test we can place to whether there's a BS level of what the state is proposing or whether it's something we can you know, we can generally count on. Okay, let me check and see what else I have with regard to the 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 fire map. I think the rest of my questions really are all more part of the larger issue of the areas upon which we have discretion. I do want to come back to the though that to the table that councilmember Newsom mentioned that's in our report, the cost estimates. So those are on page 54 to 55. And there's a mention that some of these things might be going to be required or are required by other laws and some of them might genuinely be new. Is it? So the state the so can you explain or somebody explain how the building code gets updated and as I recall that it's sort of the same process, the building code gets updated and you shall adopt it and good luck with that. You know, it's not an item over which we have discretion, right?
Yes, if I may, councilmember Funk is exactly it. So the building code's updated in a three year cycle. And in fact, 2025 is one of those years. They are bringing forth the new building code this year, which we need to adopt by January 1, 2026. So it will be coming your way actually in the next six or eight months. We'll be doing that particular building code. Very similar to these fire maps, they get given to us. If we don't adopt the building code by January 2026, If we don't adopt the building code by January 2026, we have to comply with it anyway. It's there. We can make local revisions to it that are more strict. Maps are the same way. Whether we adopt this map, it's there. We have to comply with it. We can add our own provisions to it if they're stricter. That's it.
So the voice is sort of confusion or not confusion.
Yeah.
But, but not, but not what we actually have to apply. We can be straightforward about what has to get applied or we can confuse everybody, but we actually still have to apply this.
We have to apply it. It is what it is. Yeah. The state regulation that we have to comply with, just like the building code, the fire hazard maps are exactly the same way. We have to comply with it. They give it to us. They ask us for comments. They don't listen to our comments. We still have a map.
Yeah, I noticed that they didn't allow us to make any changes in the map or question the underlying data or any of that. Coming back to the building codes then for a second. So the, the new update, am I correct in understanding that of the various things, a fire safe roof, tempered glass windows, screening on your eaves, the various things that are part of these additional costs that will be incurred in new construction in those areas that are high or very high, that were not previously in that distinction? That some of those are going to be probably in the new building code for everybody to have to do, right?
Most likely in twenty, this new building code, which we haven't reviewed yet, most likely, most of these things are going to be in there, except for the windows that are tempered glass. That's a different thing. So that's something for brand new houses, brand new construction in the wild and urban interface in a WUI zone that you're going to have to do. But all these other things like the protected eaves and different roofs and things like that, that's already either in the building code or going to be in the building code. For example, now all new construction requires sprinklers. All new construction has certain fire ratings exterior. All new construction has certain clearances. All those things are already there. This is really about the windows. So if you put no windows in your house, the cost will be exactly the same. But tempered glass is expensive. Now, the only thing tempered glass is required for are the sliding glass, big, big windows that are over certain dimensions or like sliding glass windows. Those are all already tempered in your house, but this would apply to all openings. So there is some additional cost. You know, we give extreme numbers to say worst case. In the average house, it may only be a few thousand dollars more. Sounds like a lot, but the average cost of a construction of a house now is two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. So you think, okay, there's a few thousand more for tempered glass. Percentage wise, it's not substantial and it does add a significant safety factor for protecting at home when there is a wildfire nearby and there's that heat outside. And there's plenty of examples out there from that. So, so that's one way to think about it.
Okay. So sometime, and am I correct in understanding that because the building code, the curtain, the new version is still being written and finalized, we don't know exactly what's in it yet, of course?
We have a little bit of information because our building official has been going to some of these seminars where they've been feeding him some of that information. And there are some of these things in there, but I don't know exactly what that ingredient list is yet until we disseminate all of that.
Right. Okay. So that explains why we don't know, you know, there, there's a marginal cost impact. I mean, that, that's a big impact. Thirty-four grand on the cost of a house is a big impact. But a lot of that is, you're saying, a lot of that is going to be required for everybody anyway? Whether you're in the WUI, we, we think.
Yes, we think.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And the interesting thing about this whole situation too, is most of the area that is in this extreme fire hazard zone or that we're proposing in the WUI is all built out. There's not going to be a lot of construction in it. We're not going to see apartments. We're not going to see commercial buildings because we're talking about the west side of a Tascadero. And the areas where we're going to see the most construction, which is Long El Camino along Moore Road, closing into downtown, is going to remain outside of that. It's not going to be impacted by it anyway. And we were careful about analyzing that. So where we're going to see our new multifamily, where we're going to see our new commercial is going to be outside of the WUI. So that's important to note. And everything else is kind of built out.
Okay. So the real choice we have tonight with regard to the map itself is to adopt the map and have everybody be clear about what they're going to be required to do where, or not adopt the map and people will have to guess a little bit, go to other resources besides the city maps to find out what it is that they have to do. Because if they are in a zone that requires these standards and they don't comply, you're going to dig them on their, their building, their building plan won't pass muster and they'll have to do it anyway, right?
That's kind of a good way to interpret it. The, the situation here is not really adopt or not adopt. Situation is incorporate, probably is a better word. Incorporate this into your plans or don't incorporate it and we'll keep it over here. So yes, I think that your analogy is fairly accurate.
Okay. I think that will do me for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Funk. So I just wanted to follow up. I think she was kind of asking the same question. I had, so essentially if, when somebody submits plans for new construction, the plan checker is not going to be looking at any city map to determine what part of the code they're going to have to comply with. They're going to look at the state map anyway, this, the colorful one. They're going to look at this one.
Well, no, they, they should be looking at our own local maps and our local maps should be consistent with the state maps. That's, that's what we would hope for them to do. They're not going to look at the state map unless we have local maps that are completely out of date, which we hope that's not the case.
The state map is, is going to be more restrictive no matter what. I mean, unless, unless we're more restrictive.
No, 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 no. The state map will be the state map and the city can choose to be a little more restrictive in areas where we think we, we should be doing the wild and urban interface standards.
And the end of the day, the WUI, whatever you end up choosing to adopt, which is your decision, the minimum WUI should be consistent with the state map or you're going to have a lot of confusion as far as high and very high. That, then that's what you're looking at right there. So in the end of the day, when we have parcel data to show what parcel's what and where you are, and that's how we determine how your, your plans are going to be reviewed, there should be consistency there. The question is then, do you include moderate or other areas or the whole city, which is the policy choice the council can make on your WUI later, but that's not where you are right now.
Okay. So two questions I have on this one. So the map that's up on the screen now, it says additional high and very high for the fire severity zone, but on the state map, that's all in the orange, just that all area right there. So where are the high?
What you're looking at there, that orange area on this map on the screen right now is the area that we would have to expand our WUI into because of the state map. We already have the green. The orange shows what expands with the state map. So this is, this is one, this is the bare, bare minimum option that we would have to adopt no matter what.
Okay. And I wasn't going to jump ahead, but since we got to these maps here, I noticed that the proposed WUI map that we have, which is on page sixty-three, shows, it's all green. So it shows everything that's within WUI. So, and the severity zone is whatever, I imagine what the state map says. But I noticed that there's, there's the urban area in our proposed map is less than what's in the colorful state map. There's some areas in there that, like there's, there's some areas in the yellow that are not colored at all in ours. I mean, is that?
That is a bit ahead. The chief has a greater recommendation on that.
Yeah, if I may, when we get to that point, I've got three options that we could go with and it's, you know, up to you to discuss and ask us for more information and all that. There is one that I would propose. It is, it does build the wild and urban interface standard to the moderate level in many cases, minus some key multifamily and commercial areas along El Camino. So I'll be happy to show that if we're ready now or I can wait until we get to those three options.
I think at this point, we, unless there's more, we've got more questions. I think when we're, when we've exhausted our questions, since we're going to do this in pieces, we might go to public comment and then bring it back. So if you have another question, Councilmember Newsom, go right there.
I guess the reason why I brought up this map is originally when we had originally heard that this was coming down and council was going to have to adopt it or, you know, state was forcing us to make this decision. What I did ask for is a fire hazard severity map to overlay or the WUI to overlay. So this has given us partial overlay is why we're asking, you know, the yellow, the orange, the red, to try to understand how much the state is changing it over what we've known as a general practice for our, our city. So that's why I keep going back to the WUI is trying to understand how drastic the changes are by the state map. But I don't think that we have a complete overlay at all. Is that correct?
This, this is what it is. That's it.
No, but the overlay and the fact of having the yellow, the orange and the red, trying to match it to the, what our green WUI is. Because what Mark was telling you is you don't see the yellow, you don't see any of that. You just see this orange. And when you look at it, we're trying to understand where the yellow, the orange and the red goes in comparison to the WUI.
So the, the orange and the red have the same building code standards. The yellow is, is the moderate. And then of course the no color is outside of that. So I see what you're saying by that, but it makes no, it makes no difference because it's this area that has the application to the building code changes. So this is all that really matters. The other colors, they're actually more confusing to look at the multiple colors because, really, it's just one zone that's going to have building code changes and that's the WUI zone and this is it.
That's not, that's not true because some of the red and the very high is listed in here and some of the high is listed in here. So what we don't understand is in this, if you go back, we can look at the red, orange and the yellow, some of the red is put into specific places throughout the city. So when you look at it, you don't understand on the state map, we're adopting something. How much does it change? So when you look at this map down here, see all the different very high? So how does that correlate to the WUI? Is just everything in green is high or very high? That's what we're trying to understand is how does this map overlay? Because some of these people have been in moderate for the longest time. And when we looked at that green map, you see parts that are in green and some then aren't when you look to the east side. So trying to understand what the city is changing, we all know that fire safety and what plant, wildfire planning is crucial to our environment. And they're telling us that adoption of this map is allowing communities with more accurate information about the real hazards we face. We live here, we know what hazards we face. We've been listening to it, you know, with all of the, the calls for service and we have an amazing fire department. I'm not saying that this is you coming to us saying, hey, this is severe in our community. We know it's there, but we're trying to understand what the state is mandating. There's another purpose for this coming down. They say it's not to raise our insurance rates. I don't believe it. I'm going to say that out of fun. What is the purpose of this? So is this going to affect us getting reimbursement or FEMA disaster, God forbid something were to happen? Are we, by not adopting this, are we opening ourselves out to not having coverage for something? What is the purpose of having to do this right away? That's what I'm trying to understand.
We don't know. The state has not been clear about that. They have said you shall by this date or it is.
You shall direct your staff to spend all this staff time writing these reports, you know, putting this down here, making us do all of this additional work when it's mandated. But yet we're going to do community outreach and tell the public, tell us how this is affecting you, but yet we don't know what the consequences of it is because this timeline is July eighth. That's extreme. We haven't even hit through that. And a lot of people aren't even coming up for renewal. Insurance renewals are only sixty days out. So we're going to adopt something that could cost everybody for the remainder of this year a renewal. So that's what I'm.
Or, or if you don't, it could still, the insurance companies are very aware of these. These are very public maps. They're out there. Policies are already being considered if they are taking this into account. So to take pressure off of yourself, these maps are issued by the fire marshal, the insurance companies have them, whether they're going to use them or not is, I said we're skeptical in our staff report too, Councilmember. I don't see how this couldn't be an input.
Yeah. It's just interesting for insurance commissioner to come out and say that it's not going to affect insurance rates. And then they write in the back of this report for the public that hasn't read it, that says if you, once this regulation is fully implemented, if a homeowner or a business owner takes those risk mitigations actions, they will see a discount in their insurance premiums. Has anybody seen a discount in their insurance premiums that came to the workshop?
No, but we are hoping that the fire safe community will provide discounts or at least continue their, their insurance coverage. So there are those.
Funding sources or discounts that are available. That's what I'm just trying to understand what comes with this policy. I'm done asking questions. Tell after public comment.
Any more questions? All right. Well, I guess it's time to hear from the public. So let's hear, step up to the podium or please form a line so we can kind of keep this rolling if you want to speak on, in the public comment.
Good evening, Jeff Hoslin, resident here. I'm the lucky one. All my neighbors are in this high zone. I'm not. My insurance just got renewed, but I went through my insurance itemized and I saved two hundred and eleven dollars because I read my documents. I have a concrete deck, not a wooden deck. My wood fences are more than six feet away from my house. I actually don't have wooden fences. There's all these little things that come into play. Most of my neighbors are now on the fair plan. In the last few weeks, they've been dropped. Don't, don't even think for a second that insurance companies are not looking at these maps. They do. For once, I'd like to see this city tell the state to go fly. Our fire department for the last twenty-six years has implemented, I believe, this weed abatement so your city doesn't burn down. I got a discount because of that. As much as I joke about all the letters that go out, that was a question in my renewal and fighting them for thirty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Do you have proof of mitigation? Yes, it's inspected. So I got a discount. For once, let's not play darts with the insurance execs in the state of California and throw it at it. Let's show some, uh, some strength and tell the state, no, our fire department knows better and knows best about our mitigation and about our fire zones. The state doesn't know anything when it comes to a Tascadero. I guarantee you the state fire marshal's never been to the city of a Tascadero. Probably been to Santa Barbara, but they haven't been here if you go to the top. Somebody has decided they're going to do whatever they want to do. It's time for our city to say no and fight it and say, we have a plan. It works well. We have a fire department that knows our area. We have done our moderate, we have done our fair and everything else. When it comes to building, I heard folks on council just say, and staff saying, it's not going to affect a lot. It does. You want to do a remodel? That's your fire inspector right here. He's going to say, oh no, you have to do this for code. So if you want to add on a room to your house, forget about ADUs in these areas on the west side that are already built up, you're going to have a major issue. You're going to want a bathroom remodel with a permit, you're going to have a problem. You're going to want a roof, you're going to have a problem. They're going to come in and say you have to do all these things. It's time for our city to push back for once. Tell Sacramento, no, we're not adopting this. We have our own and you need to accept it, especially because they do not give us any at all voice in the map they came out with to try and change it a little bit. They would not hear from any municipality. It's a bunch of crap. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoslin. Anybody else wishing to speak on this matter? All right. Seeing none of them, close public comment, bring it back to the council. Any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, I do want to follow up with staff with regard to the application of the, and how we could currently do it now with WUI standards. If someone who is in our wildlife urban interface, WUI area, decides to remodel their kitchen or their bathroom, do they have to upgrade other parts of their house? Do, do they have to upgrade their roof and their windows to the standards that are applicable for a new construction in the WUI?
No, this is for new structures. This is not for remodels. This is not for additions. This is for new structures.
Okay. And it apply, is it only new habitable structures or does it apply if you put up a shed?
Let's ask the fire marshal that question. So I don't, you know, of course there are certain sheds that are exempt from construction permits and there's certain, I believe this is only habitable structures, but I, you know, that's a good question.
It, it is for habitable structures unless you're not within, I think, I believe it's fifty feet. So if you have a structure within fifty feet of the residence, it would have to be built to WUI standards. But if it's beyond that, it does not unless it's habitable.
So a shed or a barn or whatever, that's more than a hundred and twenty square feet, that's when you need a permit.
more than 120 square feet, that's when you need a permit. If it's closer than 50 feet to the house and you'd have to comply with all of the woo wee standards.
I believe so. I, I don't know the exact distance, but um, 50 feet is sticking out in my mind right now. I would have to go look at the code, but I believe it is 50 feet.
That's a big distance. Usually it's, you know, much closer on other things, but okay.
Yeah, usually. Yeah, okay. Though it's important to, to get that clarified. Um, and this, does this map affect or change any of our, the way we mitigate? What we see as fire risk in the community? We're going to, we are going to do, keep doing our weed abatement. We're going to keep doing enforcement. What does this um, change in the way that the, that the fire department mitigates risk?
It won't change anything for how we mitigate risk. We'll continue all those programs like you mentioned. Strictly for new building construction.
Okay. And um, how many uh uh properties are um currently? Well, how many, how, how many of them are parcels developed and undeveloped are affected by this? Um, in the areas that are not um, moderate? So the areas where we, where we have no discretion, the map that we are being asked to, to uh incorporate tonight?
So in, on the state map, we have 1,367 parcels in our very high. That's a 12.1% of the city parcels. We have 1,296 parcels in the high, which is 11.4%. I do not have the number of undeveloped parcels in front of me for, for that state map.
Yeah, okay. And are there any areas that um, in the, that were high or very high um, in our, any, any, sorry? Is any property that was not identified as very high before going to be identified as very high now? Do we know?
Yes, I, I believe we had several that moved from high to very high, if I'm answering your question correctly.
Okay, so there, there are some properties that, that moved there, uh, but not a large number.
Yes.
Okay, and thank you.
I have one quick question. It is for Phil. Um, it's on the code. So I, I think he'd mentioned a little bit ago that the orange and the red, the high and very high, with respect to the code, the building code changing is, you know, for, especially for windows, you know, uh, fire tempered glass and whatnot. Is there any, are they going to be treated any differently with respect to the code or, or is, are they both basically in the same category?
They're both basically in the same category.
Okay, so, so if, if the, the area that we see orange and red, if there's more red now than there was before, that really doesn't change anything.
Doesn't change anything. No, it's still going to have the same woo wee codes. That's why we're really trying to just focus in on the woo wee map. That's where everything changes. So either in a zone where you have to build these standards or you are out of that zone, even though they have these three different zones adopted, it's not really as relevant as saying you're in or you're out of this zone that matters for your construction.
Okay, thank you. Yes, councilmember Newsome, okay.
You talked about new builds. Um, what about ADUs and JADUs in that area? Does that go to the
Those are considered new construction.
So
A JADU actually is not. A JADU is inside your house. So an ADU is actually new construction outside your house. So a new separate detached structure is going to be considered new construction.
So some of these parcels that are listed in here have some of the, there are multiple acreage that are being moved into that will be affected. So
Yes, yes. So that area that's close to the highway 101 on the north uh, western side of our community and actually bridges over highway one a little bit is, is impacted by the new state map. So there is an increased area that we're going to have to increase our woo wee too.
And they have, have the most exposure to be able to build these additional accessory dwelling units on those properties.
Sorry, what was that question?
How many of those properties right along that area? What did you say? A thousand that went from very high to high?
How many could build an ADU?
Well, most of them I think are on septic, some are on
Yeah, there's
I don't know.
So it's, that's, that's a number we don't have because it's all based on property size, septic capability, slope, tree coverage, or so many variables. That's a really tough one to calculate.
Yeah, and it's hard because when you look at this map, we're affecting people that don't even know to come and speak up because they haven't even decided that they're affected by it. We haven't done that much public noticing of this. We've had one workshop. The additional material got released the day of the council meeting. Um, which is always a challenge for us on the dais to read in a timely fashion. I can't imagine what the public wants to be able to get access to prior to a meeting. But on here, you've mentioned that the addition of very high, high and some moderate, this is affecting 3,300 parcels. Is that correct? In your email? Only a thousand of them are going from addition of very high to high. So a thousand of these parcels are possibly via affected by enacting the state map, even though it doesn't change how our fire department responds. It doesn't change anything of how we operate on day to day. It's just a state mandate.
Unless I'm misunderstanding your question, I believe those numbers we used are the changes for the different woo wee options? Woo wee map options, one and two? And are not necessarily tied to the state map.
So we don't know how many parcels listed on the state map got added into the very high and the high.
I have the current count, which are the ones I gave you.
Can you give me those again? I don't see them in writing anywhere. I didn't see them in the staff report unless I missed something. Were they in the staff report, Mr. Lewis?
The delta of high to very high? No, we could not have possibly anticipated the depth of the council's questions on this, so I apologize.
No, it's okay. It's just that we're, we're having to vote on just a map just separately. And then the woo wee is going to come back. So I'm trying to isolate how many people are affected. I mean, I know there's several of us in this room that are affected by this, but I'm curious to how many in our general population were aware that this was going to affect them. Okay, so
The, do you like the parcel count again?
Yeah. Go ahead.
In our very high, the, the state's very high map, there's 1,367 parcels in the very high. In the high, there's 1,296, which is 11.4%. And I'll give you moderate, 6,259, which is 55.2%. And 2,419 are unzoned.
Thank you. I'm sorry you have to get stuck doing the calculations on the state. It's challenging because I feel like we're a very effective and efficient city. And to have all of these additional mandates in the, the challenges and then these many people may be affected a year from now on insurance renewal. And that's my concern is that we get these state mandates and there's nothing we can do about it, but yet it's affecting us as a community.
One, one quick question. So on, on the page, I don't see the number on it. Oh, the additional high and very high fire severity zone. Or that, that orange, you had the map up there a bit ago that showed the orange amongst all the green. How many parcels are in that? Do we have a number on, on that parcel count? No? Do you know which map I'm talking about? It's, it's our, our woo wee map that shows the addition, the additional parcels that are going to be included.
Yeah, give me just a minute here.
While he's calculating those council, I want to, uh, there's been a, councilor Newsome, you referred to a, three times, um, a paper that we regretfully did not attach to the report. The paper is, I'm not even sure um, the validity or accuracy of the information. It's a statement from the insurance commissioner saying these will not impact your property insurance rates. So that's, that's the paper that's been referred to. It is online if you want to see it.
Attachment six was not in the PDF.
Right, but it's online now. I'm just referring to, it's been referred to, it is a piece of, it's a consumer alert that is an opinion piece from the insurance commissioner saying that these maps will not affect insurance rates. I'll leave that to an individual's um, thought, whether they believe that to be true or not. I think one of the things we'd hope to do tonight, we're really getting into a lot of great questions and I appreciate that. I think staff anticipated the vote tonight would be, you can accept the map or not. It's a pretty binary conversation. We wanted to have a longer conversation with you about getting all this information to you when we brought back the woo wee. So I think there, I appreciate your frustration with the state of California. I appreciate your frustration with the process. We have that too. And so we don't have all these answers because we were anticipating a more collaborative discussion about what you wanted to hear and where you might be open on the woo wee. We still need to get to that with our other council members. And then come back with all this information. So I just, to help reframe the issue, we can accept the state map or not. I don't know what the ramifications of that are. If there'll be fines, funding pulled, I have no idea. They've been very obtuse. If the council wants to take a um, stab at not adopting it, that's certainly your choice. I'm not aware of a city that has not done that yet. Um, and then as far as the woo wee conversation, we did not plan to adopt that tonight at all. We actually wanted to kind of get your thoughts, get this data that you're asking. We're taking notes. If there's more public process you wanted, we wanted to hear that. And when you wanted to have that conversation. And so I, I can hear frustration. I'm sorry. Um, but that was from my perspective. It was a, yeah, this is a frustrating, it's elected officials, you're being told you have to do this. That's never a great spot for an elected official to be in, but that is what the state fire marshal and this legislature, by the way. So when people are frustrated, this legislature passed laws that require the state marshal, fire marshal to do this. So when you wonder who can you call if you're frustrated homeowner, it is not the five people sitting here. It is Sacramento. To be very clear, this was passed through a series of laws that are now enacting these fire hazard severity maps. So I, I just wanted to try and clarify, there's that decision. And then we are trying to record all of this information and you are in no hurry to confirm, to adopt the woo wee in any future iteration. We can take a lot of time talking about that. That's your map. And have more discussion and have more conversation. What's going to happen in the insurance markets will or will not happen. They're private companies. They're going to choose to do business here or not. What the insurance commissioner is going to do and say or not say, um, the, I think that how we've regulated the insurance industry in the state is largely what we're here. Uh, but that's a, that's a whole conversation differently. Um, and then I think uh, how we take time to make sure our residents have a say and understand we have time, except for the people in the red and the orange. I mean, on July 8th, they're in, regardless of what happens tonight. But I appreciate your frustration and the, the detailed questions and the process frustration. We still have plenty of um, time to do that.
So I appreciate you highlighting what I was referencing. So on page, page 53 of the staff report, it does list that um, this attachment we talked about. While staff remains skeptical, uh, has issued a press release, the fire hazard map will not affect insurance rates or availability in attachment six. So when we read that as a council, we have to represent the city as a whole. And I'm tasked with being able to set up here that's affected by a very high to a moderate and, and being the voice of that. And it's hard to get the information to review. I've always been an advocate for having more information early on. So I'm not voicing my frustration with the staff to do their job. I'm voicing, voicing my, the challenges that we're trying to make a decision on in this fire hazard map as well as woo wee, which I want to get the other council back to be able to make that. But you guys made me draw a short straw, so you guys got to listen to me. Uh, unfortunately, I'm, the other two that are sitting in the council are very quiet. Um, thank you. But what I want to make sure is the public doesn't just read this PDF and it says it will not affect my insurance rates or availability and not have the attachment that goes to it. Because when I look at this, I read that it's not going to affect my insurance rates, but I also know going through the process on multiple properties for insurance renewal, that I was able to get an insurance policy. It'll probably be canceled next year because I'm going to openly talk about it. Because I had a local agent write an insurance policy that looked at our city maps. And I wasn't in a fire zone of very high or high. And because they were local agent, I feel that I was fortunate enough to be insured because I wasn't in a very, I wasn't in the hills. My neighbor hadn't just caught on fire, those types of things. And we enact a fire hazard that says that this city agrees that we are in those severe areas will be affecting all of us. So yes, all of us are elected. All of us can go higher up and talk to the insurance commissioner. But I don't think that we've done enough public outreach. It's going to be mandatory anyways. I'm not even sure why it has to be a council decision that we adopt it. It's coming down July 8th. So I'm of the mindset, I don't think I as a council that I need to adopt it. It's telling me the state's coming down? Like every other mandate that we've had, right? Building code? I mean, we just, that's my take.
One of, one of the concerns that I have with, with not approving it, well, first of all, as we've already stated that the state's going to mandate, we're going to have to do this no matter what. If, uh, and I, and I totally appreciate what councilmember Newsome is saying. I, I, you know, we're up here, we're the voice of, of the residents and landowners, homeowners of Atascadero. And uh, last thing we want to do is make it worse for them, make it harder. Risk their, their opportunity for insurance. But if we were to, to, to vote against accepting this map, I, you know, it just occurred to me that, that, that could be a sign to the insurance companies that, you know, we're indifferent to the uh, to the risk. And, and you know, we don't care about this thing. Let's just do whatever we want. That could have a far reaching, a, a worse effect on people getting insurance or being renewed. By accepting the map, you know, I, I, I see it as us taking it a little bit more seriously. I, I, our hands are tied. We either, we either say yes to this or we don't. And if we don't, I think there's more risks uh, involved uh, with, you know, with the state coming in and saying, well, you might've said no, but you're going to do it anyway. And on top of that, here's a bunch of other things we're going to take control of as well. And take it out of our hands and our staff's hands. And um, and I think that that would be, that would be harder on our residents than um, than I think we want to try to uh, impose. Did you have a question? Uh, good, councilmember Funk?
Yeah, I, I wanted to uh, add into the discussion that, that you both launched. Um, I, I agree with uh, councilmember Daras on, on the general assessment that, you know, it would be really satisfying to tell the state, take this map and shove it. But I don't see an upside for us. If insurance companies are going to use this data to screw us over, to screw our constituents over on insurance, um, then they already have these maps. And they're not going to look for maps city by city by city. They're going to look at the state website and take them all. Uh, so I don't see the, see a real pathway to um, getting, getting better deals on insurance by refusing to accept this map. It, you know, the, the state is, is trying to use the latest in data and understanding how fire, the ways in which fires are now moving, which are different and how um, the fundamental hazards um, we've all seen, I don't know, are seriously higher. Um, and the state's trying to, to uh, incorporate the best knowledge in that. I think uh, councilmember Daras is, is right that um, there's a down, potential downside of not accepting the map and drawing attention to ourselves is refusing to. It will appear that we are refusing to accept the reality that risks and hazards of fire are changing in uh, in communities and that we're not willing to do our bit. And this community is very willing to do our bit to keep each other safe. That's why we all get out there and whack our weeds. Um, that's why we have a firm ordinance to do that. And we have very few people that fail to comply um, with that, you know, weed whacking ordinance. Um, it's why we support uh, the capabilities we have of our uh, excellent fire department. And why we have communities um, uh, like we just heard tonight, who have, you know, neighborhoods that have banded together to say, we are going to, going to agree to extra requirements so that we, among ourselves, so So that we, among ourselves, so that we can be designated as a fire safe community and get a better deal for themselves. All of those are things we are in fact willing to do. So I think that, you know, we do need to have a real, you know, a major discussion about the WUI map. I'm having serious heartburn over that. And, and how much true more added costs are getting layered on to things where we have some discretion. But where we have no discretion and there's, the upside is emotional rather than financial or legal. I think that we should go ahead and adopt the map as we're required to do. And focus our attention on the elements where we have discretion and have a really deep conversation about that.
Would you care to make a motion then at that point?
Are we ready? Okay, I would move that we had, what's the, let me, hang on, let me get the, the language because it's only one of two things. I would move that we introduce for first reading by title or only the draft ordinance adopting the state fire marshal's 2025 local responsibility area fire hazard severity zone map.
I guess I will second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Derris?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you. So at this point, I think if I'm not mistaken, we can bring the, the mayor and council member Peak back?
Correct.
Okay, please join us back at the diets.
Thank you. While they're coming up, I was looking online and I searched California fire hazard severity zones. I was trying to see if there was a city that had not adopted this, if there was any more information, there wasn't. However, you can type your specific address and it will absolutely show you by parcel, what you're being recommended for on the colored map, what your jurisdiction says. And then you can actually compare that to the old map to see what you were and what you are on the recommended map. So that was actually an interesting tool. If an individual home listening on the radio or else wants to go to California fire hazard severity zones, you can type in your address. It's a Cal Fire website to see at the parcel level.
And what was the website?
It's very long. I searched California fire hazard severity zones. And there's a lot of, and then this popped up, it was the official Cal Fire. The, the website, if you go to osfm.fire.ca.gov, osfm.fire.ca.gov. I think that's another way to go than go to fire hazard severity zones. But there's a lot of the questions we had on a very granular parcel by parcel basis for our residents, I think can be answered here. More interestingly, what you are on the current map and then what you are under this map. And it was a very easy comparative map.
Okay, thank you. And as indicated in the staff report and in discussion, there were two pieces to this item on the agenda. The first was the adoption of the state required maps. The second was to review the options and provide feedback to staff on the Tascadero wildland urban interface fire map. And to be clear, that is, you know, what building, what building code or what requirements we require for homes built within the wildland urban interface. And, and our particular map. In relation to this is whether or not, what we adopt as the way we're going to provide guidance to the staff. Because if we say an area is in the, the WUI, then, you know, the higher building standards would apply. And we have no discretion about whether it applies in the high or very high areas, correct? Okay, so there was substantial discussion already addressing some aspects of this. So I don't want to, you know, beat that horse anymore than we have to. Is there anything that you did, did not present, Chief and Chief Enzong? Anything else additional you need to provide in the discussion in order to be clarify what the, what our options are for consideration? And as indicated by the city manager, we are not going to actually adopt a WUI tonight. We're simply going to provide guidance to you for, you know, where, how we want to apply this in general terms. And you'll come back later with specificity. So if you could add anything else you want to add, so we can try and expedite discussion a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we'll just go into some options, like you and the city manager both said, we are under no time constraint. We can discuss, you can ask us to bring things back, find out more information. So we, we don't have to make a decision, we just want to hear from you on how you're feeling. So I did propose three different, just real quick, this is our existing wildland urban interface map. So this is the one we adopted in 2021. It was based on a, a, a group of maps from the county fire hazards already mapped to a 2011 state map. And we tried to encompass the high and very high on all those maps into one map. So we were building to the same requirements that the state required. So that is that map if we need to refer to that later. So before I get into the picture of the map, we do have three options and I'll try to be real brief. The first option includes building to the moderate level, including moderate from the state map into our WUI map on several, most of it, except for some multifamily areas. And this is really is the most, adds the most parcels. It increases the billing stand to, building standard to more of the city than anything else. I just have to say, as the fire chief for the last eight years, nine out of the last 10 most destructive or largest wildfires have happened since I've been fire chief. And I have to recommend building to the highest code. We saw the Eaton fire and the Palisades fire earlier this year. And I, my recommendation has to be to build to that highest standard. Although I realize there are many factors that go into this decision. You have to hear from the building community, you have to hear from community development, city managers' take on it. So I will recommend this number one option that takes in most of moderate. But I realize there's a lot of factors that go into that decision. So that's the map that includes, this is, we'll call it option number one. This includes in now in the green, which is our WUI map. The moderate from the state map, with the exception of the unzoned areas, which is the, the white spot to the bottom of the screen. And the, the white areas to the top of the screen are in that moderate, however, are zoned multifamily and some commercial, I believe. We did have quite a bit of discussion with the community development department on these locations. And they really felt, like I mentioned, there's various factors that go into this decision. That weighing in the building community and economic development would factor into this decision. So that is option one. I'll go quickly. Oh, I did have, I did want to show you this map, just real briefly. I was asked the question, did the Eaton fire or the Palisades fire, did it burn structures in moderate zones? And I just wanted to show this picture. I found that the, you can see the buildings there, buildings damaged by the Eaton fire. So those are all damaged buildings. The large red to the top is very high, the middle band is high and they're hard to distinguish the colors. That little piece, it's almost tan colored, is moderate. And the, the destruction from the Eaton fire came well into the undesigned area. So since I was asked that question, I wanted to share that with, with all of you. So option number two, briefly, is to add just the high and the very high zones. We talked about this a little bit before. This adds approximately 1,000 parcels from the, that would now be required high and very high. And I would say that this really is our, our minimum map. Otherwise we'd be going backwards if we, we do some, well, I'll show you that in just a moment. But this adds 1,000 parcels, of which 100 are undeveloped. So 100 parcels are the ones that would be potentially could have a new home and built to that new standard. Those parcels are primarily at the north end of town. They, the state map includes high now across El Camino. So these are the north end of town adjacent to Highway 101 on both the west and the east sides. I can show you, we've looked at this a little bit already tonight, but, so that's our existing WUI map with the high and very high, which I would call basically our, our minimum option. There is however, the third option, and that is to disregard the WUI map altogether. This map we've had since 2021, we built in areas of the green throughout town. We could get rid of that map altogether and do the absolute state minimum, which would be just the high and very high. So we'd be eliminating many areas that have been designated very high by previous maps. We've already been building to that standard, but that is an option that I would not recommend. And to find that map, I would go back to the state map. We'd be going back to the original state map, looking at just the orange and red, and that would be the map if we chose to look at option three. We talked a little bit about building costs. Just really briefly, we, we broke down what we think, just an estimate based on future building codes, potential. And even some, you know, what, what are things going to cost in the next couple of years? So those are estimates, we think we're, we're close, but like we've had discussion earlier tonight, there's a lot of variables in there. And we've had a lot of discussion on the insurance considerations, so I'm going to leave that off unless you have a question for me. And again, so we already adopted by draft ordinance. So I'd like to hear any, any questions, any comments, anything you would like to come back? We can come back when, when you would like to see a recommendation to you. With that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Right, thank you, Chief. And I'm going to take the first bite at the apple here. In regards, if you could show the state map again, the, you know, the red, red and yellow, orange. And note the, so in, in the map, we have to include in our WUI, the red and the orange areas.
Correct, correct.
And we have the option, it isn't within our discretion to not include the yellow or the white areas.
Correct.
But I wanted to look at the, the shape of the white area and, because you're, you know, looking at your proposal as the fire chief. And I understand, and I want to get input from the community development director. But you're proposing, now remembering the shape of the white area here in particular, now if you could go to your proposed map, option one. And, there we go. The, the shape of the, I'll call it the, the white area, the, the larger white area here seems different than the, or is different in some way, from the white area on the state map. So, which means you're including, you know, some yellow and some white in your recommended map here for option one. How did you make that distinction? And or, and is, and or deciding to leave out the, the smaller white area near the top of the map?
So that map, I do not believe it leaves out, I believe it does not include any of the unzoned. So that map is basically an overlay of our WUI map, our existing WUI map and the moderate on top of it, minus the Del Rio and the north part of town. So I realize that it may look slightly different and that may be.
I mean, if nothing else, there's a white area near the, you know, far south end of town that, well, nevermind, that's already in our current WUI interface. Yeah, I mean, it looks, it certainly looks different.
Well, if you, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I should point out, I noticed, so in this white area right here, if, that white line that's going to, I'm pretty sure that's Highway 41. So if you look to the lower, it's the lower part of that, I think that's the Tascadero Lake. On the current one, it's in the white area, on this one, it's not. So the more, there's more green on this picture that you have shown right now.
So, so. Concern or confusion rather, and it.
So it did expand, I mean, it, the, the white area got smaller, it most definitely did.
Yeah.
If I may, that, that may be also because our WUI map existing already covered some of that area. So I'm not recommending taking any of our existing WUI out.
Right.
From this map.
Okay. And, and for clarity for everybody, I mean, the thing is, when we apply the WUI, then that means some of these increased costs that you've mentioned in the report would apply to people building new construction. And which I see is, is kind of really the key issue at hand in terms of the guidance that we provide. And I'm going to ask Mr. Dunzamore as the community development director in terms of, you've seen the cost figures, you've seen, you've looked at that, you've looked at the individual parcels. What is the impact of this on the, on the opportunities to build more affordable housing or the additional costs? That would be imposed on people housing? Because I see, you know, there's like, there's inherent conflict in here between safety and cost.
A big part of the reason this map was created the way it is, is our current new general plan proposed map. Which dramatically increases density along the El Camino Real corridor in the northern section where it's white. And it also increases density in the triangle in between Highway 41 and Highway 101. And it also provides for mixed use opportunities in our downtown and our commercial zones. All of those areas are excluded from the WUI map in this zone. All the areas where we expect to see additional development for the next 25 to 30 years are outside of the WUI on this map. That's why this map was crafted this way. But yes, the WUI increase in areas where, in our own analysis, we have areas that are sloped, we have areas that are brushy, we have areas that have heavy tree coverage. But those same areas don't have a lot of development opportunity anyway. So the amount of new construction you're going to see in those areas is only going to be single family homes or ADUs and ones and twos. It's not going to be the larger developments. Those are going to be just in those two white areas. And anything we could exclude that's commercial or multifamily, we tried to pull out. And the only other areas are, are kind of already in by state or already in our existing WUI, which we didn't want to decrease. And the, the intent obviously is to make the community safer, is to make our community more resilient and is to reduce insurance rates. Because the more protected our community is, the better the insurance companies are going to view us long term. And this is a long term outlook. So that, that's the, the thought process that went into this map when we worked really closely with the fire team on where we could be flexible in the future. And where we expect new development, where we have that option to remove it.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to first start with Councilmember Peak, give you the opportunity to ask some questions here and then we'll proceed down the line.
No questions.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Derris, any further questions? Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, I, I have, we got to some of my questions in the earlier part, but, and some, some I'll add for this discussion. But we'd looked at the cost, the expected added cost, worst case of all of the requirements on a single family house. Which was in the $3,400, $34,000 range. Roughly, what would the added cost be for an ADU? Because most of the development properties, the development opportunities you've described as being affected in areas of moderated risk where we have some discretion now. About the WUI would be ADUs or developed properties.
Your typical ADU is about 750 square foot, it's single story. It already has all the WUI requirements generally baked into our already approved stock plans. So there's, we don't see that as a substantial difference. Because there's only, in a typical ADU, you've only got three to four windows that you're going to have in that unit. They're going to be impacted by the new window requirements. Because your slider is already going to be that kind of glass, your larger window is going to be that way. So there's only, there's only a couple of windows in your bedroom and one or two in the kitchen that are going to be impacted by that. So the cost is quite minimal. Could I tell you that cost? No, because it depends, it's the window brand they go for. So it varies quite a bit for tempered glass. It's not just a one size fits all or one brand fits all. I can go to Home Depot and get a white vinyl or I can go. I can go to Home Depot and get a white vinyl, or I can go to Anderson and get a beautiful, you know, different kind of window. So it's really hard to nail that down, but a cost for an ADU is, again, it's not, it's not substantial. It's only going to be, you know, it's less than, less than $5,000 more probably. I would say even less than that.
Are existing stock plans, do those already have, um, uh, the, the requirements to build to the WUI standards, you're saying?
Yes, and in fact, as we get into this new building code in 2026, we're going to also upgrade those stock plans. The county's doing that now, and we're going to, we're going to have a consultant incorporate the newest code requirements into them. We have to, otherwise the plans will become dated and it won't be any good anymore. So got to keep them current.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Okay. The, uh, what I'm struggling with is, um, what, what's the benefit to the homeowner and to the community of building to these standards? And the, and in, in particular, if it only, if the only impact is that the structure built to the new standards is, is, uh, much more likely to survive a wildfire going through, then, but it doesn't have any impact on whether, you know, the main house or other houses around it, um, get, you know, are likely to, uh, do it. Then, you know, then the homeowner can kind of, they can decide whether it's worth it to them to have that additional risk or not. But if it really makes a big difference in the community, I mean, what we saw in the, in the Eden and Palisades fire were structure to structure spread of fire. Where, you know, structures burn, trees burn fast, structures burn a long time and, you know, and cast all kinds of garbage and embers and stuff out there. And so it, you know, with structures catching each other on fire, there was just no hope to control that thing in the kind of wind. So I, can you, as fire chief, you know, expound a little bit on the extent to which in nature, which it, it changes the experience when you're trying to fight a fire, um, particularly one that hasn't, you know, already, you know, burned half the town down. Um, you know, and it's, it's in an area that has some structures that are built to the standard and some that aren't. Um, what is the difference that it makes in how that fire is fought and how it spreads? And what chance you have to keep it from becoming, um, a conflagration?
Yeah, thank you. So we have a fire in a neighborhood where, you know, multiple homes, um, are threatened. We, we use some terms, one of them is called a standalone, a home that's well protected on its own, or it's, it's built to the standard, like we're saying. It's got all the box and eaves and the screens and the tempered windows. A home like that will, the fire may come up to it and, you know, there's other factors too, like the tree canopy and those other things that are in the building code. But that very well might be a home that we don't have to park a fire engine at, and the fire may go right by it. And that allows limited number of resources. We're going to have very few number of fire engines in our county that are coming quickly and allow us to go to the next house or the next house, which may be starting to catch. We may be able to catch it early and keep that ember production down, um, and help reduce the impact of that fire spreading. So I think the building code does make a big difference. The more homes we have built to the standard or voluntarily retrofitted with the, the windows and the roof coverings and the, the eaves, it's going to keep that house protected for much longer, or at least a longer amount of time where fire can get back to that house, uh, after primer been controlled.
Okay, thank you. Let me check my other questions. I've dealt with the.
I can go to Councilmember News and then come back to you. Councilmember News?
Thank you. Well, my colleagues have pointed out that I don't really have control over what the state says, but I do have a little bit of input on what the city does. I have some, a few more clarifying questions. On page 64 of our agenda, um, our PDF header doesn't come through on what that is. Um, maybe, Mr. Lewis, you can point out, um, we just have dots on the top of item G1 attachment five. I can't tell if it's proposed. What I'm trying to see is the maps for option one, two, and three, um, because they don't say it in our agenda. So I can see proposed wildland WUI for page 63. Is that option one or two?
So you, that is the chief's recommendation, the proposed wild urban interface?
So that's option one?
Yeah, the other one is that you, you, you're saying it doesn't say city of a Tascadero, add high, very high to a Tascadero?
That's what I see.
Okay.
Uh, what option is that?
That would be the second option, which is adopting the state situation.
Okay, so this is option two? For page 64? Okay. Sorry. I know we're getting used to new software, so I'm to him, got that. I can, um, what the public sees is just the map. What we can see up here is we can take and open up and see the streets. And so that's what I'm trying to understand is how the different streets affect. Because as I have questions for you, Mr. Dunsmore, um, is that we have some existing, how does the WUI changes affect those with building permits already in place? Because on option one, it hits the corner of Del Rio, there's a tiny fraction of Del Rio marketplace in there, but I think they're combined into one parcel. And then I think that we have some other permit holders on the, uh, ECR.
No impact on an existing permit. So once you're issued a permit, that's it, we can't take that away, we can't change that requirement. So it changes how we review new construction upon the date it becomes adopted. But once you're in, once you submit a construction permit, your grandfathered in at the date of that submittal based on the code that's in place at that time.
So their construction costs won't go up. So Del Rio marketplace, how is that affected?
Not at all.
Okay.
They're also not affected because they have a, a vesting tentative map, plus they're in a zone on that map that would be outside of that anyway.
So WUI has one tiny portion of their partial listed if you zoom in on it, and maybe that's just a typo.
Might just be.
Okay, and then people self-help, how is that affected or proposed people self-help?
Which one, there's two, the one, the Del Rio Ridge, the one that's just south of Del Rio Road, that one?
Yeah.
It should be outside and based on our, what I thought the mapping was there for. And it's also already, um.
Is that by right?
It's already in, the construction permit's already in, so it's, it's already vested. So it's, it's not going to be impacted.
Okay, so and it looks by adopting of the state fire hazard, we've already impacted the construction costs on, uh, Beryl Creek because they're already in the state. So they're already going to have additional construction costs when they file for their permit, correct?
No, I mean, if there's, well, if there's, if there's WUI there already today, then there's, that's already there today, we can't change that, but if they.
There's no WUI there today.
And they're going, they're going, they're already in for construction permits then, so they're, yeah, they're.
Is Beryl, um.
We're already in for their improvement plans. Yeah, some of their, some of their buildings are coming in very soon, so they're, they're not going to be impacted by this. Their, their permits are already, parts, parts of their permits are already in. I mean, I guess if they hold out and don't build a building until the very end, it ends up being in the WUI, that could be impacted. That's how it'll work. It's based on the date of each permit.
Well, right now, they're not in the WUI. So as of the current WUI map on page 62, they're not in the WUI.
So then if all of their construction permits come in before we adopt the WUI, unless the state map overrides that in that particular location.
So July 1st or July 8th, the state map overrides and their construction costs go up? That's what I'm trying to understand is how is the commercial?
But commercial, I mean, a lot of commercial has tempered glass anyway. For example, a hotel, most of it's going to be tempered glass. It's, it may not impact it very much at all. It's not going to be substantial, and a lot of these builders, because of their insurance requirements, are going to build that way anyway. So the actual change may be very, very minimal, um, in something like that. It's the multifamily housing projects that I think would be most impacted.
And single family.
Yeah, because commercial, commercial already is built to such a high standard and typically has much fewer, you know, windows and openings, and you've got a lot more concrete construction and metal construction, and you've got a lot more fire rating already incorporated with that.
Okay, and then was the WUI map presented during the workshops for the state, uh, fire hazard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, I found my, uh, my last question was, is regard, let's go back to the parcel math, sorry. But now that we're talking about the WUI, what I want to know is how many, how many parcels, developed and undeveloped, are in the area that is designated, um, moderate hazard by the state? So that we're, that we, that in option one would be added to the WUI, but that the city has discretion over whether it is added to the WUI?
So basically, we're looking at the moderate parcels between option one and option two.
Right.
So that total number of parcels is 2,300 that are moderate. 100 of those are not developed, undeveloped, let's say, and 2,200 are developed.
Okay, so we're talking, you know, it affects, for the developed parcels, it would only affect if they want to build an ADU, um, or do an SB9 lot split or something that, that adds structures to the lot.
Correct.
Okay. So, and, um, last, if, can we choose to, if, if we, if by the time we have the building code update information and we, you know, we can look at what the, the actual marginal costs are of, of adding these standards, um, in the, in the areas where we have discretion? If, if there's part of that that's, you know, let's say it's the windows, is that, you know, that's just like adds a lot of cost, um, and it's not required by anything else, can we, um, choose what, any of those, how much of those additional requirements apply, or is this an all or nothing proposition?
In the moderate?
Yeah, in the moderate.
I defer to Director Dunsmore, but I believe council could, could choose.
Choices.
Can you repeat that question?
So the question is, you know, if we do this, uh, when we're, we're making decisions on the WUI after we've got the information from the building code, if we go back and look at, you know, at those marginal, at those incremental costs of doing this, and there's something that stands out is nothing else requires it, and I use windows as the example, nothing, you know, if nothing else in the building code requires that and it's really expensive on, you know, some properties, can we choose to have, to, to not adopt every single element of those requirements? And just choose the ones that are the, the absolute highest impact? Because, you know, they're not all the same impact, they're all good.
Yes, that's interesting. I don't know. That's a good question. That's one I need to check in with my building official on, and I wish he was here tonight, but he had a family emergency and he couldn't be here, he was going to be here. That's interesting. That's something that we could, we can bring back to you, um, because that's an, that's a creative way to think about it. But I think generally the way it works, if you adopt a WUI, there's WUI building code standards and that's it. But if we had a, you know, a WUI one and a WUI two, or we had a soft WUI, there's different ways to, to go about that.
I think it's a good question, and you can come back to us with the answer now.
Yes.
It's, uh, you know, we'd adopt, if we adopt, are we adopting all WUI standards? Or can we selectively adopt those WUI standards? Okay, um, is that it? Councilmember Funk? Okay, thank you. Um, I had one more question, and then we'll open it up to public comment. Um, before I came here, I was reading, looking up articles on characteristics of homes that survived the Eden and Palisade fires. And, you know, they talked mostly about fire hardening measures, like these things here that would be in a WUI building code, talked about, um, protective space around the thing, and then every article mentioned the key ingredient, luck. But, um, what I wonder about is when it comes to the, um, the defensible space, you know, not having plants or wood chips right around your house, those kind of, um, measures that don't involve building cost. Are you aware of any communities that require that? Cause you could require that upfront, but I mean, we're not going to go out and inspect people's landscaping down the road, but are there any, any, um, have you observed or aware of any communities where there's an active requirement for focusing on those kinds of measures, those defensive measures as opposed to just building code things that, you know, significantly add cost?
So actually, the, the 2026 WUI code is going to actually include that of the zero to five foot zone where nobody could have any flammable materials, uh, bark, um, grill hair, any vegetation whatsoever. To answer your question though, that's more of what like a fire wise community would do. When we do, when you go through the community and you do an assessment of the community and you see those areas, then that, that community gets together and addresses those. Um, on new construction, if the applicant does submit, um, landscape planning, there is a section in, in the fire code, um, for wildland urban interface that does address landscaping. So if those plans are submitted in their plan set, I will review them and, um, give back comments of what's acceptable to the fire code and what's not to the fire code.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, with that, I want to open it up to public comment. So if you're, if you wish to speak, go ahead and please approach the podium now, and we'll start with our first speaker, Mr. Osland.
Jeff Osland here. Uh, just so you know, County of Marin or Marin City just outlawed wood chips and everything else in their city, and they're making residents take it out. But if you look at things in our community as you're giving direction, I'm going to disagree with the chief on windows and say that's not going to make a difference, I think everything else, and, uh, the building code probably does. But, um, what you have is defensible space. If you take the Pacific Palisades fire, you had a lot of palm trees, a lot of wooden fences, a lot of drought tolerant plants, and they burned. So those are things to take into consideration, I think, more seriously than the windows and the added cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, and if you wish to speak, please, please don't wait to get up to the podium, so.
Yes, hi. My name is Harry Wachtel, and, uh, I'm not aware as to what was provided as the basis for the factors that went into the drawing of the state map, but it seems to me that it was probably influenced by what happened in the Los Angeles area, the, the extent of the wildfires that took place there. And, uh, I want to speak to that issue as to the extent it's been influenced by that. I think that what has to be understood is that what happened in Los Angeles was the product to a, to a significant extent of the incompetence of the local officials in the city and county of Los Angeles. And also the fact that they did not ensure that there were adequate resources to deal with the situation. Previous fires in Los Angeles, I mean, there have been many, but none of them ever got out of control like this one, like, or the, these fires that occurred in Los Angeles recently. And, uh, and I think the reason that these fires got out of control to the extent they did was a product of the, as I say, the incompetence and the lack of foresight of the city and county officials, and also the way the situation was dealt with there. I think that you have the good fortune here is to have a much better managed city and county government, and the resources here are much more significant, that, and have been made more significant than were the case in Los Angeles. And so I think that to the extent it's influenced by what happened in Los Angeles, um, you could be, I might dare to say, overreacting because I think that, uh, you know, hopefully, you know, the, the city and, uh, and county officials here are not going to be as. are not going to be as incompetent as they were there.
Thank you. And next speaker, okay, seeing no one else approach the podium, I'm going to bring it back to council for a discussion and to provide guidance to staff. All right, I'll bring it back. I'll start on my left, Mr. Peak, Councilmember Peak, do you have commentary or what kind of guidance you would like to provide to staff?
If I was going to be building a house right now, I'd do it to the highest standard so it wouldn't burn down. I don't, I also think that if you're building a house near somebody else's house in a high fire zone or even a moderate fire zone, Tree City USA, I would hope my neighbor's house was fortified so we'd have a better chance. You know, I don't really have any specific guidance, so that's just my comment for now. I was at the, the meet and greet with the fire department and looking at the maps and, you know, they were, it is correct. And most people were interested about their insurance. Being that I'm in real estate and I deal with a lot of people's insurance policies, there's no rhyme or reason to a, a company insuring a home in Tascadero, doesn't matter what street you're on, doesn't matter if you're two minutes from the fire department, if you're an hour from the fire department. I went one year from paying $4,500 a year to this year, my new policy is about $2,000 a year in 12 months. This is after the Eden fire. One company wasn't insuring houses last June, now they're insuring houses in that neighborhood this June. These maps are not a secret. I don't think there's a vast conspiracy of the insurance department looking at maps to see how they could screw people over. I do think they're private companies and they're just going to do what they want. They all use different models, so I'm in favor of making the city safer with better, better fire safe building codes in general. So I'd probably be going for the recommendation from the chief.
Thank you. Mayor Portimderas.
Thank you. Yeah, something that we haven't really touched much on, so I see that in the, in the proposed WUI map for us, there's some added moderate areas. And what kind of an impact does that have on, on the construction cost? I imagine it's, I mean, it's not much, right, or it's anything at all? Because it doesn't include the, you're not required with all the, the fire requirements, you know, the tempered windows and all the firefighting with your construction in the orange and red.
Well, you would be if we add it to the WUI though.
No, on the yellow, no.
No, but if we add the yellow area to the WUI, as suggested in option one, it would apply the WUI building standards.
So it just is restrictive as the orange and the red?
Yeah.
Okay, that part I wasn't quite sure, okay. And I, and I have to echo basically what Councilmember Peak said, is I, I, you know, if I was going to build this, especially considering what we saw happen in Los Angeles and what, there was a couple of big fires up in the northern, northern area, was it? Paradise and there was something else up there that it wasn't even a wooded area, it just jumped from house to house to house. And that was because of the construction materials used on these houses, I believe, especially the events not being protected enough for embers getting inside. So I think a little bit of extra protection is, I think is important and I think it's worth the cost. I'm, I'm inclined to accept the, the proposed map.
Okay, well, thank you. Chief, before I go to my other colleagues, you know, you did add substantial portion of the yellow moderate area to the WUI, which would, you know, apply the higher building standards. And the higher, and you're, you know, adding areas to our pre-existing WUI, which I think you indicated was, was designated in 2011 or 13?
2021.
Oh, okay, that recently.
The WUI map, yes.
Okay, so, well, that's only four years ago. You know, we, other than, you know, the fire events in LA that we've talked about, what's changed about those, I'll call it the northeast portion of the city? What's changed in the last four years that prompts you to want to add them to the WUI? Is it just, you know, you're the fire chief and maximum safety is always the right answer? Or has something changed about that areas that they weren't included in the WUI in 2021, but you want to add them now?
I think some of those areas in town, kind of the north east side traffic way to El Camino, San Ycento to Rosario, that, that whole area, it, it reminds me very much of some of the fires we've seen in the last few years, most recently the Eden Palisades, they're narrow roads, they're windy, they're tight, it's home to home to home. They're not big parcels like on the west side with, you know, five acres. So if, if we were to have a ember cast driven fire that's burning, like you mentioned before, home to home, that's a, it's a prime area in my mind. So when I saw the maps and I felt strongly that we do recommend a good protection level for our city, though like that area in particular, it would be hard to cut out that area because of the, the closeness of the homes. And so, yeah, that would be my recommendation that we include it, but again, there's a lot of factors, so.
Okay, because I'm thinking in those, the far northeast portion, they are, it's not like Spaghetti Hill where they're pretty small lots and compact and always surrounded by oak forest. But I'm curious, you know, when these maps came out, Tascadero has by far in our county the most red and the most orange, I think, but by far the most colorful map. And looking in some of the other cities, you know, barely have substantial amounts of yellow. The other cities in our county, because some of them have no red, you know, and others have very small portions of red. For those other cities in our county, have they, and maybe they just aren't to this stage yet, or maybe, maybe they've gotten guidance from their council, maybe they haven't. But any of those that have, have they had added or placed yellow areas of their state map into their WUI? Are you aware?
We're having a discussion here. We're fairly certain that San Luis City has applied a big portion of the WUI code to the entire city. So I don't believe we would be the only one, but San Luis is the one I'm pretty sure. We could confirm that and bring that back to you as well.
And also you mentioned portion of the WUI code, which goes to our earlier question and discussion. So that would be interesting to note as well, if they have adopted only a portion of the WUI code for certain areas of the city. Okay, I'm going to defer now to the colleagues on the right, starting with Councilmember Funk.
Okay, so as I alluded to earlier in the questions, I'm having some real heartburn about us applying $34,000 in additional cost to development of single family residences where it's already that. I think I, I would hope, you know, we watch every penny, I would hope that I'm in the same camp as a couple of my colleagues here who've mentioned that if it were me, I'd go ahead and build to the new standard because it's more likely to survive the next fire. But not everybody is going to, but I want to make sure that there's some real benefit, not just to that property owner. If it's only the choice for that property owner, then they can make that choice like Councilmember Peace would, or they can choose not to. But if it really has that big benefit, like you say, on the community, or the cost is actually not $34,000, but it's a marginal thing of, maybe we could require only part of it, or maybe it's really the only real marginal impact is one or two things and it's a lot smaller. So I want to make sure that when we build, bring this back, we do so after we've had a chance to review and absorb the changes in the building code that we're going to all have to adopt. Because the whole state has a uniform building code. And we're going to, you know, it's going to be another one of these things where, you know, yeah, you got to adopt it because we all got to swim together as a state. And I want to see what the net impact is or the marginal impact after we look at what's already going to be required of everybody in those building codes. And so that, and to find out, can we pick from the menu a little bit? Or do we have to be one size fits all for all the properties? So that I need to know, because I'm really weighing that, you know, what's the, the real, the benefit to the community of placing that requirement on property owners who are hoping to be able to develop their home here or hoping to be able to have an ADU so that their, their kid or their grandma or their renter can have a place. So that I want to see, and I, and I do want to understand better the impact on ADUs versus new properties because that, for, for most of the properties, as we heard from the fire chief, 2,200 out of the 2,300 properties that would be in this zone that we can make a choice about are already developed. And so the, that then we're looking only at lot splits or ADUs. I would also appreciate it if staff, we've heard a lot of discussion about the maps. So, and this is one of those times when I miss the old, the old technology of the projector and the map and you get to, yeah, can we just like find some technology where you can stack the maps one on top of each other? So we can see, you know, the differences in one thing in the lines. That would, that I think would facilitate a more clear and productive discussion for our folks. And to do so with the opportunity to put that out there. And we, this is one, because we have discretion, we should do, try to do outreach in a variety of ways. You know, put this out to service clubs, get, make sure that the media can see this, look to, to try to get it out in creative ways so that people can see, look up what, what would be the change for my address? And what's the, what are we looking at in the benefit to the community of the choices that the council will have on this? I think that covers, you know, you've seen all the questions I ask in the, in the background prior. So I think that covers what I need to say.
Uh, thank you. Councilmember Funk, are you indicating though that if those things are satisfactorily answered for you, you would be inclined to support the option one proposed by the fire chief? Or just, I mean, just see where we're at.
I am on the fence.
Yeah, I understand, totally understand.
The cost, the marginal cost right now is really high.
Understand.
And that's giving me heartburn, and so I'm really looking at all of the, how, you know, how big is that marginal cost? How big is the benefit? And I will, I am willing to consider that option. But I, you know, I would not be willing to say either way until I get better information.
Understood, thank you, because I'm on that fence with you. So Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you. I'm along the lines of the alternative staff recommendations to have staff provide additional analysis and information as well as public outreach. I'd be interested in knowing what the other communities are doing in regards to their WUI. I also would like to have a little bit more detail on limitations to landscaping materials. Again, if that's going to be something that our jurisdiction is going to not allow on new builds, we talk about mulch, palm trees, things like that, if that's something that's going to be encompassed in our WUI. As we're going into the building code and understanding how it's affecting our community. I think we listed in here, it's affecting 4,000 parcels and 800 undeveloped lots. So I think the more that we know how that's affecting our community. And then also to triple check that we're not affecting any commercial development that's been in process to increase, increase their construction costs. I know that we had another developer in here last time saying they didn't, they were challenged with operating costs, insurance, construction. We add one more layer, does that keep people from building in our community? And then the maps, I'd like to see a little bit more descriptions on our packet of which one is option one, two and three, along with that severity, the fire hazard severity zone overlay, some way that we can see how it conforms to the proposals.
Okay, thank you. And I am, as indicated, on the fence with Councilmember Funk. I'm open to, you know, option one, but I have some concerns about it. And that is a little more details of why we've added, you know, basically the entire northeast portion of the city. I would be curious also to, to look into the things Councilmember Newsom mentioned about landscape hardening, if you will, as alternatives, and I share Councilmember Funk's concern about adding additional costs to individuals. I believe individual property owners have some, should have some discretion as to the level of risk they're willing to assume as long as that risk does not, you know, adversely impact the neighbors or put the neighbors at greater risk. And I want to understand that issue better. Is that sufficient guidance and feedback for the staff? I'm sorry, Councilmember Peak, you had a.
A final comment. When you make your house more hardened, and with personal experience, when you improve the hardening of your home, new roof, ceramic tile, new windows, you're doing things that are, the insurance companies, they smile on you when you do these things. Sometimes you can't qualify for home insurance policy until you replace your roof, like, like happened to me last July. So when you do these things that might cost, you know, I, I'm okay with a worst case scenario of a $34,000 for a new, a new home. If that's the worst case scenario, you're actually getting, you're getting a much more robust home in general that'll last longer in general. It's going to have a better resale value. It's also going to get you more opportunity for a good insurance policy that will cost less. You will recoup that cost over the next few years. I don't think it's a, I mean, I, I think it's, it, it's definitely added cost is, is, is a bummer when it comes to building anything. But I do think that there's a lot of pros that, that weigh into this calculation rather than just a tens of thousands of dollars of extra costs that goes into the wind and you never, you never enjoy that. That enjoyment's not the right word. You don't see the benefit of it other than the fact that the city made me do it. I think that there's a lot of benefits of having a hardened home, you know, you know, you have cementatious hardy board siding, box and eaves keep rodents and, and pests out. It also reduces fire risk a little bit. And there's so many things that are a benefit to this type of code that's beyond just keeping you safe from fire and insurance cost is one of those things.
No, I, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to comment also on the cost. Director Dunsmore indicated that, you know, the cost of building a house would be, I don't know, he said 200,000, 250,000. I don't know what size house that is, but it's not a 2,500 square foot house. You know, you're probably looking more five, 600, 700,000 for a 2,500 square foot house. And when you're adding $30,000, $35,000 to that, that's a small percentage. It's, I mean, it's less than 5%. So that, that's, you know, I mean, I mean, I don't want to write a check for $35,000 now. But if you're going to build a house of that size, you know, I, I look at added cost as a percentage of the overall cost. How much am I adding to it? How much am I taking away from it if I'm going to talk about in terms of dollars and an overall construction cost? So 35,000 in some senses is a lot of money. But I think when you're building a, you know, half million dollar house, 700,000 dollar house, $30,000 to make sure that it's more fire safe, I think is, is, is well worth the insurance just in the construction that you're doing. So I'm, I'm totally okay with the cost. I mean, like I said, if it was a $100,000 house and I was going to add 30,000, that, that's a huge expense. But in the reality of it is, a $2,500, 2,500 square foot house at 300 bucks a square foot, which is pretty much the going rate these days on a custom home, is $750,000. So if you want to cut that down to, to $200 a square foot, which good luck finding that, that's a $500,000 home. And if you're adding $35,000 to that, it's, it's a small percentage of, of what you were already going to pay. So I, I wouldn't be too afraid of the number. I think it's worth it. And in, in the items that were listed here, some of the things like the deck on this 34,000 that was in there was $6,000. If you don't need a wood deck, if it's going to be a concrete, then that 34 goes down to 28, if my math is right. So it starts to drop pretty quickly, depending on how you're going to do it. But my feeling is it's, it's, it's well worth the, the added expense. Anyway, that's how I feel.
Okay, I think you guys have guidance. I mean, I would say though that if you, some of those things are personal decisions. If I was building it, I would, I would do those things because of the savings in insurance, et cetera, et cetera. But not everybody has that extra 34 and, and in California, we, we're constantly adding additional costs to people. You know, they had a requirement for solar on everybody's roof for a while because, you know, it'll cost you 30,000, but you'll save more money in the long run. Well, some people don't have that money in the short run to pay for that. And we, I just think that, you know, in California, we do a great job of constantly adding cost to building housing. of constantly adding costs to building housing. And to me, you know, I, on principle, would to some degree defer to individual property owners for making those decisions as rather than imposing them by government fiat. And with the with the exception that Councilmember Funk noted that, you know, we expect people to do things of property, protect their neighbors. But I don't, I'm not, I don't like to be in the business of telling people thou must do X because, you know, we think it'll pay off for you in the long run. We do require things of property owners for the benefit of their neighbors. So with that, do you you have a sufficient guidance, staff, on the right and the left?
We we do. This is a lot of work. And there's tech. So we'll probably be back in October, September, October. There's a, I think we, because of the thirst of knowledge on these issues the council has and the detail you're interested in, we'll want to watch a lot of other cities, what the fire marshal does, what the building codes say, overlaying maps to the parcel data you want. Or requires some technology on to make sure we can even do that. So if you're okay with the October, September, October date, we, I think, can achieve that work.
Okay.
Just need some time. Thanks.
I think so. All right. Thank you. And that we've we've done our our duty there to provide guidance to staff. There's no, you know, motion or action required. We will be moving on to item G two, but I want to, at this point, take a very quick break, allow everybody to go to the bathroom, et cetera, for just five minutes, please. And so let's be back in our seats at eight thirty-eight. Thank you. If we could have staff take their seats, we're going to reconvene as soon as all five of us are in place. Okay, thank you, everybody. Short break. We're moving on to item G two, amendments to the city's fee schedule. I believe, am I turning that over to Ms. Jerry Rangel? Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are going to review the annual fee update. So these are fees for service fees and and different types of fees that the city collects. So I'll wait just a moment for the PowerPoint. So I can go ahead and get started. Service fees are those charges that represents costs of cost recovery for providing certain services that the city offers. These might include services like planning and building permits, recreation, or certain public safety services. The fees are calculated based on costs to provide those services or what California law refers to as costs reasonably borne. An extensive fee study was performed by a consultant back in two thousand twenty-two. And that study determined how much it costs for the city to provide each of the services on our list. Armed with this knowledge of what it costs, council then sets the policy on how much users should pay for those services. Youth sports programs have historically been subsidized by the city, meaning that participants are charged only less than what it actually costs to provide those services. Youth sports are partially tax-supported and partially user-supported. Yet other services, such as building permits, are a hundred percent paid by the applicant applicant. These are considered fully user-supported fees. Staff recommends keeping certain fees at no cost. Council previously reduced some fees to zero in order to further council's strategic initiatives and support general community benefit. Zero dollar fees include broadband fiber installation and maintenance of sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and street trees in the right of way and for non-city maintained streets. The update tonight represents the annual inflation adjustment. The update reflects a CPI or Consumer Price Index adjustment of two point nine six percent. Most of the fees in the draft schedule reflect only the CPI increase. However, some fees are fixed by state law, and typically, they don't change. There are a few fees that were added or adjusted as needed. If adopted tonight, the new fee schedule would go into effect in sixty days. And that conclude concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does members of the council have questions for staff? I'll start with Councilmember Newsom.
This is my really short list. I don't know if you're prepared for that. Just kidding. Page seventy-three looks like we added ministerial subdivisions. It looks like before there was no cost allocated to that. Was that lumped in with something else? Or urban lot split, smaller subdivision?
Um, let's see.
Fee number on that, Councilmember Newsom.
Twenty-five dash zero one eight A.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Um, I think this one was perhaps added during the last fee update and looks at the staff time to process each of these applications.
Okay, but before we did not charge for urban lot split? I'm trying to understand. Oh, the item above got split out. Okay, thank you. Um, and then? That's all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Funk.
I think staff are going through my questions in advance, so I just have a few that I want to clarify here tonight. For look, first of all, looking at page eighty-five, there's a community development technology surcharge. Could you explain it's seven and a half percent, seven and a half percent of what? And and what is so and does it apply to, you know, every option that might be shown on something? So those eighty-five.
So.
Please, Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. And so this does apply to every item on here, and it's based on the fee. So not on the value of the construction, but on the fee that is charged.
Okay, thank you. That's I was looking at these million dollar project fees and going, seven and a half percent of that? Ooh, you know, but no, okay. So it's it's like more like on a million dollar project, it'd be like thirteen hundred bucks instead of like seventy-five thousand.
Yes, you are correct. Thank you.
Okay, I'm good with that. Page ninety-one, we have we note fees for code enforcement. If somebody in the neighborhood makes a complaint because there is a code, they've identified a code enforcement issue in in, you know, around them, the person making the complaint doesn't have to pay a fee, right?
That is correct.
Okay. They just let us know that they're observing something bad and then we deal with it.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, great. And then page ninety-five, in the language on the weed abatement program, we note the program is designed to only recover the cost of the properties that do not comply. And my understanding is that that, you know, this maybe and maybe this language is clear to others, but not to me, that that our intent is to recover the full cost of the program from the cop from the properties that do not comply. So the properties who don't comply get it, you know, get to pick up the cost of of all of the monitoring for everybody, which is a real incentive to get your weeds whacked.
Actually, we could do that. So the city is legally authorized to do that. But back in twenty eighteen, this was kind of a bigger discussion on how should we set this type of rate? We had a study that came to council, and the council at that time decided that we should set the fee to recover just those costs that were born because of non-compliance. So if we had perfectly compliance and no ones that we had to cut, we'd have the same price to the city as if we had thirty lots that we had to cut because we're recouping those thirty lots that we're cutting, we're recouping just those that cost, that additional cost over our initial program. So the cost that we charge on the weed abatement only covers the cost for non-compliance. It does not cover the whole program.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that, certainly. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend Darris.
I don't have any questions. Thank you. Very good report.
Councilmember Peak? Any questions? Okay, no question for you. I have I do have a question on page page one sixteen of the agenda, page forty-six of the fee schedule. Zoo admissions. I noticed zoo admissions going up particularly for non-residents, up to fifteen dollars. Now, I have to admit, I was wrong in the sense that a few years ago, we raised the zoo admission fees, and I thought that might have an adverse effect on attendance and therefore ultimately an adverse effect on revenue. And I was wrong about that, but it still concerns me, you know, charging fifteen dollars for zoo admission. I mean, you know, for a family of four, that'd be sixty bucks. And so I'd like either our zoo director or it's Terry Banish, you don't see her. Well, she is. She's sitting right there. Because one of the things we want to do, and I think we're going through rebranding, is attracting, you know, more non-resident visitors to the zoo. And I'm wondering, you know, how did we arrive at at fifteen for non-residents and or these general increases? And do you have any concern about, you know, the increased price causing some people to, you know, demur on attending the zoo, visiting the zoo? And, you know, is any experience factor in other places that? Is there a point of resistance where you end up with less if you charge more?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Burbo and Council. So we have a couple of slides for the zoo tonight to show the mission pricing. As the Charles Paddock Zoo takes steps to rebrand and implement a successful business plan and work to be revenue positive, the next step for us was to take a look at our fees and make sure that we're fair and competitive with other zoos as well as other local entertainment options for folks from general admission to the zoo membership program. So this shows you our proposed zoo rates. And in doing so, we had really given a lot of thought around keeping the residential rate flat to the thirteen dollars and then fifteen dollars for thirteen years and up for non-residents. In addition, we have the senior price in the military and families and students at thirteen dollars as well to try and really be thoughtful around increasing rates. In twenty twenty, we were at ten dollars, and then we went to twelve. And then here we are, thirteen, going to fifteen. But when you look at inflation and all the things that are happening out there, but to be consistent and be competitive and fair, we did a lot to align our zoo admission and really take a look at everything, make sure we're competitive, make sure that we benchmark with our other zoos that are similar in size, similar in the timeframe that you're there, and keep our residential rate again flat. We also added offering a group rate. And with the group rate that's up there, we're asked often about group rates and breaks. And that was an opportunity for us to really look at what other zoos do that are similar in size to us, what other entertainment options are around, whether that's locally here with Mr. Putter's Putt Putt or the movies or what have you, that we're being very competitive with our rate and fair to the value that they're getting. We also, with our military rates, we wanted to make sure that we offered the military personnel with the residential rate as well. So we gave a lot of thought to that to make sure that we're in line.
Okay, thank you. And that military is that's active duty, currently serving, correct? The military rate is for active duty people currently serving. Yeah, with ID to show it. Okay, all right. Thank you. That answered my question. I don't see any other questions. Let's go to public input, public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for any discussion or emotion.
Charles, she had another slide. Can we talk about membership? I'm sorry, I I was lucky to commit, participate in the finance committee, and the zoo has been ideal for me. And so they had a slide on the membership. I'd like her to just kind of go over that briefly, if you don't mind.
Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. So first, the friends of the zoo worked together to really look at right sizing our membership tiers because we had such quite a few tiers up there under former membership program at the bottom. And a lot of those tiers really weren't, um, being used, like the military one, for instance, had maybe twelve people that had, you know, purchased over the course of the year for membership at that particular, um, rate and that particular program. And basically, um, it was combined with the hundred dollar package above that you see under new membership programs. We researched a variety of zoos, including Santa Barbara Zoo, L.A. Zoo, Fresno Chaffey Zoo, Zoo Tampa, and a handful of others to make sure that our membership was competitive and the value offered in the membership tiers was beyond what other zoos even offer. So the the value that you see there is huge with the different things that we've added, uh, from not only your unlimited zoo admission, but your, you get a Friends of the Zoo sticker that shows that you support the zoo. That's important. Adding the additional number of guests per visit where before we didn't have an additional number of guests that could go along with the different packages. And then we have free or discounted admission to any participating AZA zoos. That has always been an option with the membership packages. But we also added discounts on educational programs, zoo camps, birthday parties, um, and events. So they get a lot of breaks there too. And also showing that different level, all levels support daily animal care. And then the higher levels, two hundred and five hundred levels provided in need of funds for new habitats, equipment and animal enrichment. So these are the reasons behind the membership. It took quite a bit to do that, um, with the team and the and the committee to come back and really present something that's going to have a large value to it. And again, help us with our business plan and all the things that we're working on to be successful.
Thank you for catching that, Councilmember Newsom. That's very good information. And, um, this, the membership program will be in effect when? Now or?
Yes, it's it's up and running. So we've had a lot of good success with that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, uh, do we have a motion?
I move your proof, council's recommend, or, uh, staff's recommendation.
Okay, I'll second. Okay, I'm gonna go with the loudest. I'm gonna go, it was a motion, motion by Councilmember Newsom and second by, uh, Mayor Protim Daras. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Daras?
Yes.
Mayor Burbow?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, with that, we are going to, that, we will move on to our next item, which is a nuisance abatement hearing for forty-five forty-three Yerba. And I believe this will be initially presented by our city attorney, Mr. David Fleishman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, um, before you this evening is something that I would say is both unusual and familiar to you. Familiar in the sense that you've seen nuisance abatement in the form of weed abatement over the years. Um, this is in a similar vein and for similar reasons, public safety. So ultimately, what we'll be asking you to do tonight is to adopt a draft resolution declaring the public nuisance at forty-five forty-three Yerba Avenue and ordering abatement of the nuisance. So, um, I'm gonna do a quick PowerPoint, but, uh, give you a little bit of background. The property's been the subject of a number of citizens' complaints over the years. And Ayla Tomac, our code enforcement officer, is here and she'll be able to answer any questions that you might have regarding the property and the efforts that have been taken and undertaken over the years, um, to try to abate the, uh, the nuisance at the property. Going back, there have been a couple of fires on the property, one in March of two thousand eight and another one, uh, more recently in September of twenty twenty-two. Uh, when I show you the photos of the the property, you'll have an understanding of, uh, why, uh, this has been a problem for the city to abate. Um, the city's issued a notice to the property owner, uh, and has issued multiple warning letters to the property owner asking that the property owner clean up the property, um, to no avail, uh, to this point. Um, I drove by the property myself this afternoon to see what the status was. Um, it has not been cleaned up. So, um, it's in violation of a number of provisions of the city's municipal code, as well as the building and property maintenance codes. Those are listed in the staff report and those are the bases for which you would be declaring the nuisance that is not in compliance with that. So let me go ahead and go through the, um, some of the slides here for this. And, uh, I'll see if I can get this to work. There we go. Um, so, um, in September of twenty twenty, um, the, the, through early twenty twenty-five, there were citizen complaints and work with property owner to remedy the violation. And on April eighth, uh, code enforcement served a notice of nuisance on the property. Under the city's code, that is the initial step that's required to begin the abatement process. On the property owner's given, excuse me, thirty days to abate the nuisance condition. Uh, and if that's not done, then on May twelfth, there was another notice of nuisance abatement hearing, uh, giving notice that tonight would be that, uh, that hearing for the property owner. So what we're looking at, this is the, uh, the situation, uh, that was at the property as of the date of, uh, the first notice of nuisance abatement. Uh, and we've got a couple more photos. Um, there's outdoor storage of materials, uh, there are inoperative vehicles. And this is the, the current state, uh, as well without significant change, um, as of today. You'll notice a inoperative vehicle that is, uh, um, it's, uh, it's an old hearse. It looks, it looks to be. But there's also other material to try to surround the property that constitutes both a, a public safety hazard in terms of, uh, vermin, rats, but also the potential for fire hazard. And this particular area of Yerba on their fairly tightly, uh, tightly closely knit properties, um, this is, these are not large lots. Um, and so the possible transmission of fire, uh, is elevated in this particular, uh, neighborhood. Um, so this is May seventh, uh, just shortly before the notice of the hearing was provided. Uh, and again, I, I went by and these are just a couple additional photos to let you know, uh, what the status of it is. So, uh, the recommendation that we're asking you to, uh, declare the property, uh, a public nuisance and, uh, issue an order to abate the nuisance. And if it's not abated, then to have city crews, uh, or a contractor, uh, abate the nuisance. With that, uh, Ms. Tomac and I are available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fleishman. Um, I do have a question, um, first. Without rehashing why this took so long to get to us, I would like to, uh, know for future purposes. Is there any reason why a situation like this could not come to us more quickly for answer, for action? So that the neighbors, you know, don't have to look at that for five years?
Well, there are a couple of ways that nuisances can be abated under the city's code. There is a summary abatement procedure, um, which is less involved than what we have here. But in light of the significant amount of, uh, um, material on the property, we felt that it was more appropriate to provide all available due process to the property owner to avoid any potential claims that, uh, the city came in precipitously, uh, and abated a nuisance where the property owner was not given an opportunity to respond to that. So from April eighth to tonight, uh, that that's the regular nuisance abatement process. And that's more in line with what you see with the weed abatement process that we have. It's approximately the same amount of time that goes through it. But the city does have a power to go in and abate immediate, uh, life, safety, health issues, um, that are nuisances. If there were active burning on the property, uh, it would have been taken care of significantly quicker than this.
But I mean, we're talking five years in this instance or four years from initial complaints. Uh, there's nothing in in the required timeframe that would require us to wait that long.
That's true.
Now, we, you know, we, the city incur the expense, assuming the, assuming the property owner does not respond to the, to this notice if we adopt this. And then, so we incur the expense and it goes on property tax as a lien or as an assessment for the current year?
It's considered a special assessment. Uh, that's the way it's set forth in the government code. And it's collected in the same manner as other special assessments. There is also a way to put a notice of lien on the property, uh, but it's collected along with the, with the property taxes.
So to say, let's say the city spends five or ten thousand dollars cleaning this up. You know, when we do a weed abatement, which we just discussed in the fee schedule, that's on the person's current year property tax bill. As opposed to a lien which would not attach until the property is sold. So would this attach to the next year's property tax bill? Or would it wait until the property sells before the city would get back its money?
Um, it, it can be done both ways. Uh, the, the code does provide for a special assessment. Be our recommendation, obviously, to collect it as expeditiously as possible, rather than waiting for the property to be sold.
And would that be part of our action this evening? I just see a draft resolution, but I didn't.
It, it will come back to you, uh, because we, the, as you know, with the weed abatement, the work gets done. And then there's protest opportunity to protest the cost of it. And then, once that's done, then it goes on the tax rolls. So this is the initial step to move down that road. Now, does the property owner have, uh, an opportunity to clean it up, uh, before city crews or contractors come out? Absolutely. Um, we're looking for compliance. We're not looking for punishment here. We're not looking to make the homeowner's life more difficult than it may already be. We're looking to protect the public safety here and that's the whole reason for this.
Exactly. I just wanted to assure, you know, staff that, at least from my perspective, we, you know, want to see these things happen more expeditiously, even if the city had to wait ten, twenty years for the property to be sold and and collect back. But if there's a way to, you know, put it on the current year property tax bill, that's even better. So, okay, thank you for your thing. Any other questions from council? Councilmyleft, uh, Councilmember Funk?
Yes, um, would the, uh, abatement actions that are taken, um, involve just what's outside the property? I mean, the pictures are all about the out, you know, all of the stuff that's outside.
Well, you're, you're declaring what you can see as the nuisance. Um, we've provided you the basis. I don't know, and maybe Ms. Tomac has some information about what's on the interior of the property. But the interior of the property is less of a concern, I would say, than the exterior. Because the exterior, uh, as you can see from the photos, is there's a significant accumulation. So, uh, what you're declaring is the property as you can see it with the information that you've been provided.
Okay, yeah, so it's the, it's the inoperative vehicle, it's the outdoor storage of scrap and junk, et cetera. And combustible materials outdoors. And the actions wouldn't at this point involve anything inside the home?
Um, I would not anticipate it, but certainly I wouldn't want to foreclose it if there were a possibility. You know, for example, uh, upon cleaning up, the contractor looks through the window and sees, um, you know, jerry cans of gasoline sitting in there. That might be something that might be an immediate life, safety, health issue that we would come back for or even, uh, summarily abate.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I would like to follow on to that, though. You mentioned, I mean, obviously this is visible from the street. Uh, and so in a, in a situation like this, there may be piles of junk in the backyard, which is visible to the neighbors. I would perhaps want to ask the code enforcement officer or the fire department who visited the property during a course of a fire, whether similar, I mean, stuff is equally dangerous in the backyard as it is in the front yard in the sense of, you know, rodent infestation, fire danger, et cetera. Do we know what the backyard looks like? And I'm assuming this cleanup order would apply to outside the structure in the backyard as well.
To answer your question, yes, it would apply. Um, I'll leave it to, um, Ms. Tomac and defer to her as to what her observations may have been on the property. You know, obviously, there are ways to, uh, get pictures, uh, in the backyard, uh, but, um, she may have more information on that.
Right. Okay, I'd just like to know what you've seen. You don't need to go in detail because he can't, yeah, go ahead. Because he can't answered my basic question with, with a yes, which is we can clean up the backyard too. But what have, what have you seen?
Similar, similar to the front.
Okay.
Inside yards.
Got it. That's what I want to know. And in a condition like that, how do you know the vehicle's inoperable?
In addition to it?
No, how do you know it's inoperable? I mean, it's stuck behind all that crap.
It's, yeah, it just has stuff piled on and around it and has not moved.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for sitting here to provide this information for us. Okay, um, no other questions from, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Protim Daras.
Thanks. I'd just like to follow up on that because we, I mean, as, uh, the mayor mentioned, the backyard, which we didn't really talk about. But I've seen pictures of quarters where you can barely walk through the house, which obviously a fire hazard started from the inside. Is there a threshold of, of where we could go within the house? I mean, is that, is that beyond what we're, because the fire can, is most likely going to start inside.
Yeah, if we've got a basis to believe that that condition exists inside, there are methods by which the city can get access inside. Um, obviously consent is the, the easiest way to do it. But, um, I've, in my career, gotten a couple administrative inspection warrants where we convince a judge to issue a warrant to go and inspect for the purposes of life, safety, health issues, but not criminal prosecution. That's an extreme step, uh, but if we are led to believe from the work that's done on the exterior that there's a need to do that, that's certainly an option available to us.
And so if during, um, the cleanup, you know, somebody was to observe through the window that they, you know, through a window that, that they saw just piles of trash to the ceiling that made it that condition. Is that, is that sufficient enough? Or you still need to get a judge to, to order?
I certainly would feel more comfortable having a judge sign off on an administrative inspection warrant. Of course, if the property owner is willing to let city staff in there, that's another option as well.
All right, thank you.
And would that extend to an open garage if you visibly can see everything, you know?
Yes.
In there? Okay, got it. All right, thank you. Um, excuse me, let's proceed to see if there's any public comment on this item. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to. Whoop, I'm sorry, we have somebody. Please approach if you want to speak. And please state your name for the record and you have three minutes. Terri Stinson, okay, are you the owner?
And I'm the property owner.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell council that I have been working with code enforcement. There's been two code enforcement officers. I have done everything they've asked, except for one issue, that I'm trying to put my porch floor back in my porch. And, um, the only place I could figure to work was to put it on the driveway so that I could put the floor in. I think it was Officer Cook that said, um, he doesn't care what's on my porch, but he didn't want things on the driveway. So unfortunately, I had to move everything on my driveway on to the porch. It was cleared because I had my house painted six years ago. And, um, I had to end up putting that, um, in storage. But there's, I've had a very chaotic life the last five years, if not longer than that. There are, um, some mental health issues. There are, um, my own health issues and, um, my partner's health issues, who's no longer living in the house. But, um, I just want to see if I could please have things written out more precisely as what needs to be done. I just know that I need that, that floor back in and that'll be, take care of the stones that are in the front yard. I, I need the time. I'm only one person and I did have, um, blindness in one eye three years ago. So I've been, um, working by myself and with a disability as well. And I, I'm open for options to, um, help me figure things out where I can put these things. And so that I can continue with my project. That's the biggest one that I think is interfering. Uh, the cars are operable. They, uh, I can, um, have them moved if, if you need that done. I, I don't know, you know, I went to DMV. I can get, uh, current tags on them or, you know, whatever's needed. Cause it, it's doable. So, um, I don't, I just don't know specifically what's needed. So I think I would like that a little more precise and continue to work, um, on a step at a time if that's feasible.
Okay, all right. Thank you, um, for your comments. Uh, I was gonna let you go a little over because you are the, uh, the, the actual subject of this agenda item. But could you wrap it up in a sentence or two? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, that, that's it. I, I just would, you know, with all due respect, I would like some additional time.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next speaker, please, if you'd like to comment.
Hi, um, my name is Leanne Como. I, um, am a friend of Terri's. I helped her in the past with her projects and I intend to help her with this project. We're asking for more time. We're asking for a clear, concise list of exactly what needs to be done. She gets to be, gets to be a little bit confused by just, uh, with the overall statement of it. Maybe small bites of goals to, for her to, um, reach would be great. And I can help her determine what that, um, as far as the car, I can vouch that she's had a mechanic out there and they're working on getting that, um, running and, uh, registered so that will not be considered an inoperable vehicle. And yeah, I don't know what else to say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Susan Eggers. I'm a social worker with the county of Slope, Adult Protective Services Division. I'm here on behalf of the property owner. I can appreciate the gravity of what's been presented here, as well as the patience that's been extended by the neighbors, the city and its code enforcement officers to this property owner. the city, and its code enforcement officers to this property owner over the past five years. I, though, have only recent involvement. It has been shared with me that the property owner's good intentions have been hampered by family issues. I'm also aware that very little has existed in our county for hoarding. But as fate would have it, our division has just begun a support group to assist those in these type of situations. The Buried and Treasures Group meets every other week and is running through December. And it will cover topics such as strategies for beating hoarding and enhancing motivation. The property owner just began these classes and advised me that she plans on continued attendance. Though I cannot guarantee success, I am requesting that the property owner be granted more time to abate the nuisance. I also request that code enforcement continue to work with the property owner, providing her goals that are specific, achievable, and time-bound until she meets the community standard. Generally, hoarding has a mental health component, and it seems that the council would want to err on the side of this longstanding property owner so as to further the city's mission to build community by fostering an outstanding quality of life. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, if not, I'm gonna bring it back to the council for any further questions, discussion, or motion. I did have a question for city attorney. If I'm reading the notice here correctly, it gives the property owner until effectively May 27, on which there would be another hearing before the council as to whether or not the conditions have been corrected?
I believe that's correct.
It'll occur, but this.
No, that, the May 27th is today. You're setting, you're setting a timeline of 30 days from today to abate the nuisance. So that's not specified in stone. You could certainly specify in 60 days, 45 days. You're given a little bit of discretion on that, but ultimately, the order is going to be to the code enforcement officer that the nuisance be abated after whatever period of time the council sets, after making a determination that there is a nuisance.
So that is not stated in the draft resolution. I don't see it as why I'm.
Yeah, so the recommendation on the page 126 is to order the abatement of the nuisance within 30 days. That's going to be a different thing than the resolution itself. The resolution is just declaring the nuisance.
Okay, understand. And so what I wanted to get at, though, is we are, in effect, giving the owner an additional 30 days here as a minimum if we adopt this.
At least, yes. And I apologize, in section five of the resolution, it is buried in there that it says directing the property owner to complete abatement within 30 days of this, of the notice.
Okay, okay, got it. And I'm assuming that the code enforcement officer has conveyed, I mean, the letter or the nuisance abatement letter that was provided does specify what needs to be cleaned. Maybe not item by item, but, I mean, it lists the things that need to be dealt with. On, I don't know, maybe we need to ask the code enforcement officer, you know, what has the property owner advised? Because I believe just driving by and looking at it, it's, everything in the front yard needs to be moved, and everything in the driveway needs to be moved, and that's fairly clear. Is that what has been conveyed to the property owner?
Yes, for the most part. Most everything needs to get moved or cleaned up. Anything that would fall as a hazard, scrap or junk, things that are rodent harbinger, insects, mold. There's a lot of stuff on the property that's probably going to need to go. Some people might be able to store in a garage or bins. She doesn't have the area to do that. The garage is full, from what you can see. You can't even close the door at this point. The porch is full. There's, she's, for the size of the property, there's too much stuff on it. Most of the stuff is going to have to go.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, discussion from council or questions? Let's start with Councilmember Newsom.
You guys have indicated that you'd already been undergoing weekly meetings with the property owner. Is that correct?
We had. That has not been as recent.
How long? It said over the past several years, you've been setting up weekly meetings and inspections to encourage her forward progress. Has she shown any progress?
Initially, back in the end of 2022, in August of 2022, I moved to a code enforcement position. So that's when I've been working with her since then. It was our prior code enforcement officer before that. And that spot was vacant for a little while. I had weekly meetings set up with her that we did for some time. And then there was some compliance on cleaning out a portion of the side yard to have access to the backyards in case there was a fire. That was the issue in the 2022 fire. That was in the backyard. That has since been filled back in.
And then, at any point, did she also have additional assistance to help her with those projects and that progress towards her goals with us?
At that time, family and friends were helping.
Okay.
I'm sorry, was that your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes, if the, if this proceeds and the abatement has not occurred to city standards, and we contract with the, a commercial service to tear that, will the city give a more specific list in the, in setting a contract for the company so that they know exactly what's considered junk and what's not, what the standards are? Would we?
I think it would be somewhat of an iterative process with the contractor to make those determinations. But ultimately, in the absence of a demonstration that, for example, the vehicle is operative or inoperative, if it's not operative on that particular day, it will be removed, because that's one of the violations that is shown there in violation of the municipal code, storage of inoperative vehicles, outdoor storage of scrap, junk, and miscellaneous articles. I understand that one person's junk can be another person's treasure, but ultimately, if it constitutes combustible treasure, it is a danger to the public, and that would be the direction to the contractor. If it's something that could burn, or if it's something that's harboring rodents, that's something that needs to be removed and abated.
Okay, so I was wondering if we are going to have some kind of more specific specs to the contractor? If we could provide that to the property owner in advance? I mean, this is pretty clear here to me, but it's not clear to the property owner. Would we be able to provide that sort of checklist? Or something so that they, that the property owner could choose to have, to contract with her, with her own service to, to open a storage unit or some other kind of thing, or find a friend to take some?
Yeah, and that is part of the process of the notice, rather than the summary abatement, is to give the property owner an opportunity to determine which things to keep and which things to allow to be removed. If the approach by the property owner is it's all treasure, then a decision's going to have to be made that, okay, public safety dictates that it all be removed, because we don't know exactly what the property owner will believe is something worth salvaging or worth saving. And so if the property owner does believe that, the property owner's got some time to get that taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on my left? With that, I think we're ready for a motion on this item. Staff's recommendation is that council find a, declare a public nuisance and order abatement of that nuisance.
I'd be inclined to give the property owner, you know, a little bit more time. You'd give 45 days instead of 30 from this, from this date, not from the notice date, but give that. I mean, patience is not endless here. This has been going on for a long time. But that, but I would be willing to do that if that's incorporated into a motion.
A motion with amending the 30-day period to a 45-day period?
Yeah, and the 40, 45 days from this date, and the, declare the nuisance, and, and the remainder of the staff recommendation as specified with the additional timeframe.
I'll second.
Okay, is that clear, city attorney?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second motion by Councilmember Funk, second by Councilmember Newsom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Protemderis?
Yes.
Mayor Brabo?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you, and please get to work, because we don't want to impose a city contractor doing the cleanup, so. Okay, thank you. We will move on to our next item, which is council announcements and committee reports. We'll start on my left with Councilmember Peak.
Yeah, we had a city schools committee, which was great. Probably the last one we'll have with Tom Butler on his way out, and had a great conversation. We had a finance committee last week going over the budget. It was a great process to be part of, and learning a lot as we go along in my first year, and looking forward to more finance committees with Councilwoman Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor Protemderis.
Thank you. CAPS met last week. Not a whole lot to report on that meeting, which is pretty basic stuff. APCD met. The biggest item on that was the approval of the appointment of the person replacing Gary Willey at the director's position. Other than that, there wasn't anything of major significance.
Was a selection made to replace him? That can be announced, or is it still under process?
It was already made, and I can't remember the guy's name.
Okay.
But he was already the number two, and he'd been there for a while, so. They had already made the selection, and the board just approved that, that selection.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, I had a meeting of the Homeless Services Oversight Council last week. In addition to the items that you would expect us, we had, for the first time in anyone's memory, a report from the, an epidemiologist in county health regarding deaths in the unhoused community. It's something that HSOC has been asking for for some time, to better understand this. And she reported that they were able to identify 136 deaths of unhoused persons since 2016. The, the details of this, it's not, this is not a perfect number by any, by any such of the imagination, because nobody comes to the corner with a, with dog tags saying that I was unhoused. But there was a real effort to look at the death certificates and to cross-reference it with other sources of data. The two big takeaway, the big takeaway for me was that I would have expected almost all of it to be drug-related. Forty percent of the deaths were drug-related, and another 10 to 15% alcohol-related, including both acute effects like overdosing and chronic effects. That, another 20% was clearly identifiable as chronic diseases that had gotten out of control, which we find that unhoused persons often had difficulty getting the medical care that they need, and of course, being unhoused is really hard on your body, particularly, you know, being outside. So this is a first foray into this. We'll, we do have a committee that'll probably look into it further over time. And we note that the, there are also a couple of factors, including a new coroner who came in in 2020, who got a lot more systematic in terms of looking at documentation of, of folks who were unhoused. And in 2022, the state added a checkbox to the, to the death certificate, where one can very explicitly identify someone as unhoused if they are so identified in information from others that, when the coroner gets that information. So the information is getting more comprehensive, and we did see numbers uptick consistent with both of those. But the, the bigger takeaway is that the uptick in, in rising number of deaths was, was largely associated with the better documentation and collection of information, rather than a really large change in the factors affecting death of unhoused persons right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you. As Councilmember Peak detailed, we were very busy last week. So we did have the city schools meeting on May 20. We're excited to talk about the pool schedule, but then they also did assure us that school does start back up August 13. So all of us panicked about our summer vacation plans. The finance committee met on the 22nd. Staff did a great job. It's always a challenge to try to get us all those numbers and let us pick through them, but as always, staff did an amazing job, made it very easy to follow. League of California Cities isn't having a meeting until June 13 for transportation. I have a SLO COG meeting next week on June 4, and RTA isn't until the following month, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. I attended two meetings since our last meeting. The first was IWMA. We will be lowering the IWMA fee again. Specific amount to be determined at our June meeting. That's, that's good news. Also, had two special meetings where we interviewed candidates to replace Mr. Kron as the executive director. We did make a tentative selection that is not ready to be announced yet because of going through the final steps in the process. So that's, that'll be exciting, especially exciting for Mr. Kron, who is ready to retire. But it will hang around until we get the new person on board. Also, attended the mayor's meeting in Moro Bay. Council, or Assemblymember Addis mentioned her bill to add 10 more liquor licenses, make 10 more liquor licenses available in San Luis Obispo County. As many of you know, those licenses are based on population, so it takes kind of a special act to get over and above what would normally be allotted by population, and the logic of her bill being that as a tourist-serving area, we have a lot more people here doing a lot more drinking, frankly, than just the resident population. So the increase is justified. I asked, though, and she, it does not specify in the bill how those will be distributed. And so that's an item that staff will be following up on to ensure that Atascadero gets a shot for one or more of those additional alcohol licenses. Okay, with that, we're going to move to individual determination, and I have two things to mention myself. One is, we discussed briefly last time about, we're going to have a committee that will be a, well, not a committee, a wastewater working group to discuss and meet with members of the community, members of the business community, regarding different aspects of our future wastewater plant improvements and wastewater rate increases. And we're, I am appointing Councilmember Funk and Councilmember Peak to that wastewater working group. Unless they jump up and, you know, beat me with a stick right now. I don't want to do it. Okay, that being said, we also need to make appointments to our DRC committee. We've had some substantial change in the planning commission. And as you know, the planning, the DRC includes two planning commission members. And so after asking who is interested and discussing it, I am appointing, Laura, help me out here, Greg Heath and Eric.
Ponaccio.
Ponaccio, yes, as the planning commissioner members of the DRC. The council members will remain the same, and we're discussing whether we need to replace the at-large, public-at-large member. So, does anybody else have any individual determination or actions? I did want to also mention, I did attend, or maybe it was mentioned, that CAPS held a fundraiser, and CAPS gives out money to teachers at Atascadero School District for various projects, and they've been a little dormant, but they had a big fundraiser at the Zoo Event Center. And former Mayor O'Malley, former Mayor Moreno, and myself all did bingo calling for a couple of the games there, so that was fun. And so that was enjoyable and raised some money, and Councilmember Funk was there. And they raised some funds to help out our teachers in Atascadero schools, so that was nice. Another example of volunteer spirit alive and well in Atascadero. Okay, with that.
I just mentioned back on the DRC that the public member who's previously served has been excellent, and.
No, I know, I know, I know her.
And recently was willing to continue to serve.
Okay, because we need to, you know, make sure some paperwork stuff gets completed in that regard. So there's not, we're not aiming to replace her, just, we need to confirm that some paperwork stuff gets in. So, okay, all right, thank you all. So, okay, all right, thank you all. With that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.